I'd like to call the Middlesex County Board Supervisor meeting back to order. At this time, Mr. Williams, could you give us prayer and then followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Let us close our eyes and bow our heads. O gracious God, our Father, we come once again. Father, we come to this place, Father, to do our county business. Father, you ask us to guide us and strengthen us to grow as a unit, Father, and to make the best decisions that we know how. Father, based on the things, the facts that you have gave us. Father, we thank you for your darling son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross. Father, we thank you for that early Sunday morning arising. And Father, we thank you for being God all by yourself. Now, Father, strengthen us in our earthly ways that we can go and do county business in an upright way. In Jesus' name, we all do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would all citizens of our nation rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on the agenda, for approving the consent agenda, but I would like to have amendment to the consent agenda on item nine on the new business dealing with a resolution for Churchview Post Office. Along with that, the agenda, we're having the minutes of the meetings, disbursements, and payroll. Do we have, anyone have a motion to accept the agenda with the proper changes?
So move?
Uh, no.
We have a motion by John, probably second.
No, it was not probably second. I say I-
You wanted to add something?
Oh, you want to add? Okay, well, I'll get the question afterwards. Okay. We have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, but probably second. At this time, any question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Turn to your Board of Supervisors' package, page nineteen.
Page nineteen, can you pull that up on it for him?
Yes, sir. By the way, this is really nitpicking, so I apologize in advance. Third line.
Third line on nineteen?
Yep.
Okay.
You'll see something that says, "For maintaining a pressure of five hundred to seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute."
Yes.
Well, you don't talk about, actually, instead of the word pressure, you should say line capacity to allow. And you don't want it to be five hundred to seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute because in a couple lines further down, you say that you want to have at least seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute per hydrant. So you don't want to above, say, five hundred to seven hundred and fifty, and then down below, say, two hydrants at full flow of seven hundred and fifty. I realize that's a little bit nitpicking, but-
So unless you want to have that corrected properly?
I think that would be a nice thing to do.
It's what was said. Yeah, it's what was said in the meeting, though, so you have to record the way it was said, so if it was said wrong, it's recorded. It's recorded correctly, but stated wrong.
Could I maybe clarify for you a little bit, Pete? The original design called for five hundred to seven fifty, and this is saying, in order to fight fires at the end of the line, it needs to be seven fifty. That's the way I read-
Yes, but read on down here, you'll see seven, it says, "Two hydrants at seven fifty gallons per minute."
Right, right here. That's what we want it to be, even though the original design was only five hundred to seven fifty.
Okay.
So I think we got better than the original design.
Okay.
I think Pete's points are engineering technicalities about the difference between capacity and pressure, and he's not wrong, but I also think Betty's not wrong, we're recording the minutes. So I think we're all on the same page as to the design of the system, we just don't all speak well technically at all times.
Okay.
Given that speaker was a chemical engineer, points noted, Pete. Mechanical engineering got over on him.
Thank you.
I'll let Mr. Chambers know.
I've never trusted a chemical engineer.
All right, so that's pretty much clarified. Okay, we had a motion, it been probably second, and we had discussion. All in favor of this motion? So by science, I. None opposed, motion so carried. Next on the agenda, we have recognition of J.D. Davis. I got this plate, I would like to, county would like to award to you, Middlesex County Board Supervisor, to make the certificate of recognition to J.D. Davis, and wishes to express the sincere thanks and gratitude for twenty-nine years of dedicated service to the citizens of Middlesex County in ensuring the integrity and security of Middlesex County voting equipment, February the fourth, two thousand and twenty. J.D., congratulations for many, many years of service with voting. Do we have anyone who would like to address the board at this time?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and County Administrator. My name's Russ Parkinson, I'm trustee for House and Property-
Make sure you, in the microphone, so everybody can hear you.
Jason to Hummel Field. I thank you for having me. I've recently become aware of a matter that causes me some concern. It's not really related much to the items on the agenda tonight at your public hearings, so I bring it up here. But I got curious in looking into a matter after my wife said something, and I found an article in a transportation business magazine. Title of it caught my eye, it says, "You need insurance to drive a car, but not an airplane?" question mark with it. So I read the article, and it referenced, had some interesting information, and it referenced the 2015 report that Congress from the Government Accountability Office, a pretty recent, and they looked at state requirements, which states required liability insurance and the like for small airplanes privately owned. So what I found was, the GAO office report said, "Most states don't require any liability insurance for airplanes." Apparently FAA has no authority to require insurance. Only four states require liability insurance. Virginia, not exactly one of them, the blue states on the map, you know, so it's very limited. Of course, all the white states have nothing. Some people fly into Hummel from other states, too. So it caught my eye, having property near the airport, and I know some others are concerned about this as well. There are seven additional states that do require some type of minimal promissory, you know, situation, like a minimum net worth that they could pay for it. But I found a lot of those states in this GA report where their law went into effect in nineteen fifty-one, and, you know, money was, you know, dollars worth a lot more then. So some of them were like, you had to have ten thousand dollars of liability insurance for property damage, which I don't think would go very far. So the other thing, the states that do require you just to have net worth, you know, my thought is, you know, good luck trying to collect from the estate of a deceased pilot. I think it'd be very difficult to do. So since some out-of-state plane stopped at Hummel Field, and the essence of this report and article is, you look up in the sky, there's a quote in here, says, "If you see an airplane flying overhead, there's a statistically significant probability that there's no insurance or no liability insurance on that aircraft." So I know some planes stop in here to buy fuel on the way to somewhere else, and I guess after finding out this information, I'd probably rather they shop elsewhere for gasoline. Thank you, Board Members.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Bob Jackson, A-Ran. The Southside Sentinel, January twenty-third, 2020, article reads, "Sewer to Cost County Fifty-Five Million Dollars." A few questions came to mind. First, is this county really headed in the right direction? My answer to that is very questionable. The idea of them trying to entice businesses to come here to generate tax revenue to help pay for such initiatives is something that should have been done twenty-five to thirty years ago. Secondly, who pays for the sewer and water system? Answer, the taxpayers. How much will it cost? Well, the opposed CIP has this project cost at fourteen million dollars. Now, the estimate has increased by almost three hundred percent to fifty-five million dollars. Back in 2014, when this administrator was asked, "How much will it cost the taxpayers for the water system?", his response was, "That will be no cost to the taxpayers." I would never forget that, and I hold you to that statement, and now look where we are proposing to spend millions. If there is one thing you can bet on in this county, that would be taxes going up every year. With only one business interested in coming here, which is still questionable, I see nothing else in the future that will give taxpayers a break. The Southside Sentinel, January sixteenth, 2020, article reads, "Thirty-seven Million Dollars Capital Improvement Plan Set." Here again, we are talking about millions for renovation, some are needed, and other things questionable. How can this small county, with a population declining and businesses closing, keep justifying spending millions and millions of dollars, only to keep hearing the same message, loan interest rates are cheap? It would be really interesting to know how many outstanding loans this county really owes. I would be, it would be really interesting to know how this county owes. I am asking that the county administrator provide that information for the citizens of this county. Well, no matter how cheap the interest rates are, they still have to be paid. This means that your children, your grandchildren, and probably your great-grandchildren will be paying for these loans. I agree that there are needed initiatives to maintain the county and foster growth. The burden is on each and every one of you, as a board member, to be fiscally responsible and be good stewards of the county funds as to determine what is best for the taxpayers and the future of this county. Thank you.
Tom Hardfield, I'm in Fegum. Now you know what happens when you get old. One of the things you have is difficulty hearing. And after the last meeting, I said, "This is stupid." And I went up and looked at the sound system. Now, I was dealing with sound systems fifty years ago when I was in the Air Force, and been dealing with them constantly ever since. And there's a complicated system back there that if you can't have adjusted by staff here, then have the people that sold you that system come in here and adjust it. Because I think it says that we, the taxpayers, can attend these meetings. I think the assumption is, when we attend these meetings, we can hear what is being said, and that happens about half the time. So I'm going to tell you, that's a good enough sound system back there in my old, old brain, that it should be able to be adjusted so that everyone has a mic, everyone uses a mic, and every mic can be heard out here. Thank you, and if you don't, I'll come back again and haunt you some more.
Thank you, Ms. Fegum.
Hi, I'm Monica Sanders in Topping, Virginia. I concur with the first gentleman that spoke about the fifty-five million dollars. Apparently, we currently owe about twenty-three million, but I have not been able to verify that exactly yet. And if you took just the fifty-five million and divided it between approximately ten thousand residents, that's five thousand five hundred dollars, and I'm sure some of them are too small to come up with that kind of cash. You also want to give the teachers a rate of five percent, and I think we just gave them, they get a step increase regardless of what we do here. And so they want a five percent increase, and then the staff wants a five percent, and us seniors get a one and a half percent. So that doesn't make it very equitable. If you could tie it to the rates that the seniors get, I think that would be a little bit more fair. The state is increasing the budgets astronomically, we're not sure where it's going to go by the time it's done, and I think that we may not, we may want to check that. There's a lot of laws that will not pass muster with the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of Virginia, and I expect those to change. But I would appreciate if you all would just slow down on sewer and water and not do it all at once, and make it a pill that we have to, because I know what happens. In Hanover County, somebody who did a letter, instead of one million gallons capacity, they, somebody put a four, and all of a sudden, it was three times more than what the original intent was. And so these things happen, but I didn't want it to happen here. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lewis Briggs, ten thirty-four, Locust Hill. And this to all the Board of Supervisors members. It's a shame, what I see in this county. Number one, you're going to spend millions of dollars for the next four years for, you're trying to get a sewer in here, then you're trying to get water in here. I just want each one of you, as supervisors, go around and look at your district. They are nasty, some of them are really nasty. They need to be cleaned up before you take a step and get involved into spending a whole lot of money in the next four years. It's, I mean, it's just really nasty. Some of these ditches need to be pulled. When it rains, you got water all in the highway, and on my way up here, I seen three places where buses was on side the road, picking up carcass that been there for two and three days. This is a crying shame. You supervisors need to get up sometime on Saturdays and ride around and check your district out. They are nasty. You don't put these orders in place, you need to abide by and get this county cleaned up before you make a step and putting a whole lot of millions of dollars into something that you don't know what it going to do. You digging a hole, and you gonna have enough dirt to cover it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Do we have anyone else who'd like to address the board?
I hadn't planned on saying anything. I'm Frances Robbins from Deltaville. I would just like to say, the Bible says that the people perish for lack of knowledge. And I feel like that in many instances with the water and the new sewer that you're looking into or planning on doing, I'm not sure that the people in this county really know what this is going to cost. It's not in the Sentinel. I mean, it's really, the underlying, I don't think most people, in fact, I would say, I'd say ninety-nine percent of the people in this county right now do not know what Middlesex County owes. They owe twenty-three million dollars. So where does that put us? How are we going to pay it back? I'm thinking about my children and my grandchildren. We spend a hundred million dollars, you're going to burden my children and my grandchildren for the rest of their lives paying it back. I'll be gone, you'll be gone. My children and my grandchildren will still be here, suffering through taxes that could cost four to five times of what they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robins. Do we have anyone else? Okay, well, thank you. Next on the agenda would be Constitutional Officer, Treasurer Kathy Thrift, which is also on page sixty-one, sixty-two.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Kathy.
Anybody have any questions over the report we sent in?
Anyone have any questions? We don't have any questions, but thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Condolences on your father, Kathy.
Right, well, you have a different thing. Next, we have the Commissioner of Revenue, Ethel May Burke.
Good afternoon. So I just wanted to get back to the board on the question we had about high mileage and also our hiring process in the Commissioner's office. I'm still in the process of hiring for the full-time and part-time position, positions that are open, and right now, no final selection has been made. In reference to the high mileage discount, with a high mileage discount, the value is adjusted based on the age and mileage of the vehicle. For example, if taxpayer can receive the discount in 2021, but not for 2022 if they don't apply each year, which is something that they would need to do annually, and also provide proof of their mileage. Some ways that they can provide proof are oil change receipts, state inspection slips, junk DMV titles, police accident reports, or also repair bills. In order for the vehicles to receive the discount, as we use NADA to assess the vehicles, they would have to be specially coded so that NADA recognizes them and also adjusts the value. There is no way to track the total value discount because NADA, when they assess them, they take that amount off before it's updated into our system. However, as the vehicles would need a special coding, the total number of vehicles that receive the discount can be determined. The number can vary from year to year as eligibility is determined annually. And researching, I found that the localities that do have a high mileage discount request the information as of January first. So they're requesting all change, well, your mileage amount as of January first or as close to January first as possible, and they require applying for it and providing proof by May first. For those localities that bill twice a year, they seek that information by March first. I feel that it's a pretty safe assumption to say that Middlesex has a good amount of residents that work outside of the county, so that could potentially increase the amount of vehicles eligible for the high mileage discount because travel times for commuters may be higher. And then also, I found that the discount would not apply to motorcycles, motorhomes, large trucks, commercial trucks, business-use vehicles, or trailers.
Anybody have any questions for the Commissioners?
Yeah, so we don't have that in place right now?
No, we don't.
Would you mind putting that in the report? I was scribbling as fast as I could, but I didn't get there.
What I'll do is, I can just send this information to Ms. Betty to distribute if you want.
Good work on the research here, May. Just curious whether you got any feel for, from these other counties, what percentage of their vehicles qualified and what the discount was, or any, just kind of in order of magnitude of what would be the impact of it?
Okay, so the lower end of localities that had vehicles that received it was about twenty to twenty-five. The extreme, which I think is pretty high, was about eight hundred for a locality. And I want to speak with that Commissioner a little bit more to see how they got that many.
Eight hundred high-mileage vehicles?
They had about eight hundred.
Wow.
And the rest of the localities were about seventy or less. And that varied for them year to year, depending on who turned in their documentation to prove their mileage or even applied for the program.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Ethel May, appreciate it. Next on the agenda, number five, Agency Staff Report, B-Dot, Joyce McCraw.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You have your board report in your packet for January. Wanted to let you know that on the traffic engineering, as an update, the CTB did approve the Raymond Burrell Memorial Highway at their January meeting, and we met with the family this week to go over what the next steps are for that signing that may happen later on in the spring. So that's an approval instead of an under review. But upcoming in the county, since we're having good weather, we're kind of gearing up for, instead of snow removal, it's not going to do it, we're trying to get into getting some pipe washing and ditching done throughout the county. The current projects we have are some ditching on Seventeen Regent Road, six-ten, six-oh-three, six-oh-two, and some places along Thirty-three, and some side roads off of Thirty-three. So over the next two or three months, that's going to be our plan for those. And as usual, this time of year, with the cold and warm weather, we have potholes, and we're continuing to address those. So anyway, thought I would give you some actual routes for those, and also, in your March and/or April updates, we'll start putting in what routes are going to be resurfaced, because I guess you'll get questions for those. So once those contracts are awarded and we have those routes, we'll put those in there for you to have those as well. So other than that, unless you have something for me, that's all I have.
Anyone have any questions for Joyce?
Yes. We seem to be having much more garbage along our state roads, and I think we're doing what we can to clean them up. Could you tell me what the state is doing to help keep our roads clean?
So locally in the county, when we have inmates come to help us on the roadside, we are assigning them to routes that we know that have issues. So we're having those help. When we mow grass with our contractor, a couple of times a year, we have litter removal in those contracts. And V-Dot partners with Keep Virginia Beautiful for our Adopt a Highway program, so we have that partnership where we can get some information out to the public on adopting sections of roadway in the county, up to two miles at a time, so that, and we'll provide all the bags, the signs, the vests, things like that. That's another program that we administer throughout the Commonwealth with that partnership. And if a county has cleanup days, clean community days, and they have a mountain of garbage bags, we come out and pick those up as a courtesy, take them to the dump with the dump trucks and things like that. So we have those mechanisms in place, and depending on the locality's program and what they have going on, we usually sit at the table and try to figure out how we can help locally, if there's something else we can do with what their plans are. I don't know if that helps or not, but-
That's very helpful.
Does anyone else have any question? If not, thank you, Joyce.
All right, y'all have a great afternoon.
Item B, School Matters, Dr. Peter Gretz.
I may have to advance that point, but here you are. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me here today. I'm here to request a supplemental appropriation, and this one, I think, requires some context for everybody. We discussed this in the most recent Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and did get the green light from that committee to come and make this request. Our school board had a meeting last week to approve this, but I do want to give you some information and give you an opportunity to ask some questions about this. And then I understand earlier today in your work session, there may have been- And then I understand earlier today in your work session, there may have been a question about performance contracting, and I'm more than happy to address that as well, if that comes up. Currently, well, just as a matter of introduction to this request, I think that through our Budget and Finance Subcommittee and the relationships that we've tried to forge between the two boards, and certainly between the county administration and schools administration, we've worked very hard to build relationships of trust that avoid what I'm going to say is more typically found in matters of finance between the governing bodies. And that typically is, the superintendent comes in and really needs $5, but asks for 10 because he's pretty sure you're gonna automatically cut to 7, and we go through this little game. And to illustrate that, I do not think that we have that here, and I think we've worked hard to not have that dynamic. And I want to just remind folks, and in some cases, maybe just tell everybody about an incident that happened, or I guess a discussion that happened, in one of our earliest Budget and Finance Subcommittee meetings, where we had the need after the school year started, we had a dramatic increase in special education students. And in that committee, I'll spare you all the details unless you want them, but in that meeting, we used historical data and explained how the Code of Virginia assigns ratios based on different variables, the disabilities that are at work, to paint the picture for the need for another paraprofessional to meet those services. And the supervisor that was on that committee looked at that historical trend data and said, "It really does appear that you're gonna be back here in six months, and this need is gonna increase. Are you sure you don't just want a teacher?" And I looked at that individual, and I said, "Yes, absolutely. We want a teacher, and we could use a teacher, but I want to make sure with the long view in mind that when Pete Gretz comes and says we need something, you understand that we really need it. I'm not padding it with wants." And so, building upon that conversation, I'm coming to you today with this. We have four preschool classrooms in Middlesex County. In addition to that, we have a Head Start program. Head Start is a federal program. We partner with Head Start, and they use facilities in Middlesex High School, but they are not our employees, and that's not our curriculum. So, it's separate from Head Start. We have an early childhood program that serves three-year-olds, and you might remember, my first year here was when Tom Kenny and Kids First had begun funding that, and it was a, am I doing that?
No, that's...
Okay, I'm sorry. A tapering funding program, so just this past year, we picked up the full burden for the three-year-old program. We call it Kids First. We have a four-year-old preschool program that's funded through Title I. Those are federal funds, too, that come to us because of our, it's based on our free and reduced lunch rate. A third classroom is funded through the Virginia Preschool Initiative, VPI, and you might recall during last year's budget, through the state VPI program, you're found eligible for a certain number of seats for four-year-olds, and in order to access state funding, you have to put up a dollar for every dollar of funding that's provided. So, we were one of very few localities that had never applied for that. We were leaving money on the table, we had four-year-olds that we knew we needed to serve, so last year, for the first time, we applied and received the funding. We're still leaving money on the table with that program. We could have another classroom, that's another matter. So, these are three preschool programs that serve what I'm gonna call general ed students. They're just general preschool students that are gonna come to us in kindergarten, and these are the different ways that they're funded. The fourth program is an early childhood special education program, and this is the one I want to focus on. It's a little different. It serves two- to five-year-olds, and it's driven by IEPs, Individual Education Plans. You might know that the schools are obligated by law to serve any residents, any students that have IEPs from age two to 22. Now, that doesn't mean after they leave us and go to college, we serve them. It means we could have a 22-year-old at Middlesex High School still receiving services, depending on what their IEP called for. So, these are students that we have to serve, and we certainly want to, and they come to us in a variety of different ways. The variables that impact how many students can be in that classroom, this is two- to five-year-olds. One has to do with caseloads, so the state only allows teachers to carry a certain number of students on their caseload. That's how many student IEPs they're responsible for. Stop me if you want me to go into any more detail with any of this. And then the other is disability. Certain disabilities carry more, I don't want to say value, but more points, if you will. The state assigns points based on caseloads and disabilities. So, some teachers may be able to carry a larger caseload because of the disabilities that are represented, and vice versa. Okay. Currently, in this early childhood special education program, we have one teacher and one paraprofessional. Based on the disabilities and the points assigned, they can only serve eight children. Those two adults can only serve eight children. We began the year in August with eight students. We had one come in shortly after school started, and one left shortly after school started. Between that time in August and today, that number has doubled. If 16 two-to-five-year-old special needs students in this classroom are completely out of compliance, and it's frankly, an unsafe environment, and so, we have to increase the staffing in order to address that. There's no way that we could have anticipated this increase. There's no way this time last year that I could have known to budget for this increase. There's a variety, it does probably beg the question in your mind, why? Why do we have so many? And there's a variety of answers to that. I don't know that I can give you the definitive answer. We have a lot of students, and everybody around us has experienced this, we have a lot of students that are being identified with speech and language needs at early, early ages. You can get on Google, and you can find 1,000 articles today that will tell you that one of the reasons for that is that children are engaging less and less verbally with their parents, that they're spending more time on screens, that they're getting less literacy development in early ages. I don't know if that's true or not, but that is one of 1,000 explanations for why we're getting so many diagnoses with speech and language. But we also are seeing a lot more kids with autism. So, for example, I have to be careful in a small community and a small school with eight kids, if I start telling anecdotal stories, somebody may be able to identify who I'm talking about. But after the school year started, we had a family move in from out of state, and they had twins, both autistic. So, right there, there's two more kids with autism. But another dynamic I want you to be aware of, I just think this is important that you know, we have a relationship with the C.S.B., specifically through the Rural Infant Services Program, referred to as RISP. I just pulled these off of their website, just to give you some context. RISP serves students, serves children with special needs from birth to age three. Now, those referrals can come to RISP in a variety of ways. It can come through a physician, it can come through a parent. Frankly, it could come, my brother-in-law might be with me in my living room and notice something about my two-year-old and say, "Pete, you need to get that checked out, something's not right there." And I may call RISP, and there'd be a referral right there. So, RISP is getting, they're seeing a dramatic increase in younger, younger children that are referred to their program, and they do their own observations and testing to find kids eligible for services through RISP. The reason I circled that one bullet, because you'll notice through RISP, these are the services that these children are offered, and one of those specifically links them to community services. One of those community services, so if you remember, they serve children birth to three, we're obligated to serve children that live in Middlesex with special needs from two to 22. So, there's definitely a link and an overlap. And when RISP, as a student, as a child that comes in as an infant, and as they develop, they see the need for increased occupational therapy, physical therapy, increased speech and language, consultation in special areas, as those things arise, RISP naturally refers them to the school. And this year, we had candid conversations with the Director of RISP, who basically said, "You really need to anticipate a big influx of kids, because we're seeing tons of them, and we know that you can serve them better than we can." Those are my words. I think that it's definitely a partnership, okay? RISP is not, they're not shirking responsibility and giving them to the schools. It truly is a partnership, and in many cases, for example, students with autism and significant disabilities, we're better equipped to deal with them. That's the whole purpose for the Early Childhood Special Education Preschool Program. So, these are some of the dynamics at work, and these are some of the reasons. So, we currently, in this classroom where you can only have eight, we have 16, and there are two children right now that are going through eligibility. Another thing I'll say real quickly is when anybody refers a child to us, whether it's a parent, a physician, or they come through RISP, we don't simply take them in and automatically find them eligible for services as provided through the schools. We go through the same eligibility screenings, our own assessments, and in some cases, we request other assessments of RISP or the physician before they come to us. So, I want you to know that we're screening these children to make sure that we believe that these needs are verified and that we, they're in fact, placed correctly. So, the immediate solution that we would like to implement today involves reassigning a paraprofessional currently at the high school to leave the high school and go down to the elementary school for the rest of this year. And I do want to be clear to everybody here, this is a cut at the high school. It is not a reduction in services. We're federally mandated to give those services, but it means that this paraprofessional who was providing services would leave the high school, and those services would be done by others. So, this is a reduction in what we're giving the high school to meet these needs. And in addition to that, we would like to hire an additional paraprofessional for the rest of this year. So, you can see with the blue boxes, currently, we've got a teacher and a paraprofessional in one room with 16 kids. What we'd like to move to is a teacher and three paraprofessionals, the current one, the one who comes from the high school, and the one that we hire, essentially with two classrooms of eight. Now, if the space is an adjoining classroom, and we're gonna repurpose what was in that classroom, our day treatment providers through the C.S.B., they'll have to vacate that classroom. So, we would be able to staff this for the rest of this year this way. Our, this is not a long-term solution. Our long-term solution would be, next year, to return that paraprofessional back to the high school, assuming that those needs are still there as they are this year, and to hire another pre-k special ed teacher. So, we essentially would have two classrooms, each with a teacher and a paraprofessional. Every year, we monitor the IEPs, the kids, simply because we have the needs we have in all three schools now does not mean that those are the needs that'll be there in August. So, we'll go through an exercise over the summer to evaluate if we can repurpose the people that are there before we hire somebody. I just want to give you the long-range plan, but the reason I'm here today is requesting the salary and benefits for a paraprofessional to be hired now, prorated for the rest of this year, and that's reflected in that amount that's in your packet today. I know that was a lot, but I'm sure there will be some questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I just have one question. If we were at eight in August, we're at 16 now, and we are hearing from RISP that this is gonna continue to go up, is this maybe not a time to be a little bit more aggressive about our forecasting, or are we looking at other communities and seeing if their numbers are jumping up at the same rate as ours? How do we not be reacting to this?
Well, that's a great question. It's very difficult to forecast. Now, I used the example of the speech and language students. Speech and language is a service that we provide in-house, and it's not one that is as intense as, say, a student with autism or severe profound. So, I think I can safely tell you, those are gonna continue to increase, and they're increasing in Matthews and Lancaster and Essex, and I think we're equipped to deal with that right now. What I can't predict is that next week, three of those kids that are on that slide leave and go to Georgia, or three come in.
But just to make sure I understand, your next-year solution is a teacher and a parapro, a teacher and a parapro, which means our capacity is 16 students to stay in compliance?
It, you can think of that...
Depends on the point system?
It does, it depends on the points.
But we're borderline. I mean, we'd have to have favorable point ratings to take a 17th student.
Potentially. It's very hard to nail that down, because it depends so much on what disability comes in.
Yep.
It really does, but it's a great question. I do think that this is a, I think this is a bare minimum. This brings us into compliance, and it enables us to make the environment safe and to instruct them the way we need to. It doesn't necessarily give us a lot of breathing room for growth.
Right, right.
Do we have any more questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve a budget supplement request form FY 2020-29?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, show by the sign saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion so carried. Does anyone have any more questions for Dr. Gretz? Is that it on the air for you? All right, thank you. Have a nice day. Social Service, which is a report only, pages 66 to 68. I don't think she's out here. Next, we have Registered Budget Supplement Request, Melissa Welch, pages 69 and 70, if you have a book with you.
Matt's gonna put it up on your screen. I want to make one change. When I submitted it, I used the Electoral Board's Budget Line item instead of the Registered' Budget Line item, so it should be 1302 instead of 1301. So, this is for certification. I started it last year in 2019. It's a national certification that's offered by the Election Center and Auburn University. It was brought to Virginia by the Registered Association to reduce travel, since it is a national certification, and I would like to continue it. I put in my budget last year, but it was cut while I was out on maternity leave, and I didn't know till too late, so I am here to request that money again. Do y'all have any questions?
Do I have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, that was gonna be my only question. If you were in the training last year, why wasn't it budgeted for this year, but you preempted and answered that question, so I am ready to make a motion if there's no other questions.
If there's no other question, do we have a motion with budget supplement request form FY 2020-30?
So moved that we approve the budget supplement request form FY 2020-30?
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, been properly seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, show by the sign saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Motion so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next, we have Personnel Policy, sixth time, Nancy Gassell?
Gassell.
Gassell, okay.
I can pull it up. Absolutely, thank you. Welcome to Middlesex.
It should, it should be easier either.
Okay, Middlesex.
Yep.
Got it. All right, here's the clerk.
Oh, thank you.
Good afternoon, and thanks for having me today. I'm here to talk to you about your hybrid disability policy and make a recommendation for a potential change in your sick leave policy for your hybrid employees. That's the purpose of this meeting. I wanted to give you a little bit of background on the hybrid disability situation. So, in January of 2014, well, actually, in 2013, there was a change in the Code, Title 51.1 in the Code of Virginia, that requires all county governments and municipalities who are not part of the state, which in Virginia, most are not, to offer disability, both long-term disability and short-term disability, to all employees hired on or after January 1st, 2014. Now, this was an unfunded mandate that required... Now, this was a unfunded mandate that required the county government to pay 100% of the premium for all of these hybrid employees. So in essence, every employee has short-term disability and long-term disability, if they're hybrid, and that began in January of 2014, and you are paying for the entire freight of the premium, and that was kind of put into law. The coverage itself is, kicks into effect on the eighth day. So if you think about a work week, it's an eight, or eight-day, eight-day waiting period. So if you think about a work week, somebody will miss five workdays, plus the weekend is seven days. On the eighth day, you have to start paying them. And this is a self-funded program, which basically means they're staying on your payroll and you're just paying them 60% of their income until they're tenured in at five years, and then there's an escalation where eventually it will get to, it goes from 60% to so many days at 80%. And there's a graphic that will show eventually they'll get to 100% of their payroll you'll be subsidizing if they're deemed to be disabled. And now, today, Anthem is outsourced, you're outsourced to Anthem the decisions on whether someone is or is not disabled. So your internal HR folks are not making those decisions, but there, you know, if they are deemed to be disabled based on medical records, then you, you've got to pay them. They'll have continuous coverage for short-term disabilities for 125 days, and then if there's, if they continue to be disabled, that'll gravitate into a long-term disability that will cover them until their social security, normal retirement age, whatever it is at, you know, based on their age. And again, they get 60% of their benefit, and it runs concurrent with FML. And basically what that means, if somebody's out on a family medical leave, you still have to enact all the family medical leave paperwork, but this works in, kind of like in tandem with that. So if you think about, that's all your hybrids, your Plan One and Plan Two folks, which are everybody, mostly everybody that's been hired prior to January 1st, 2014, which is your bucket of what we call the legacy employees, those employees are not offered this program. Instead, what you offer to your legacy folks is sick leave. You give them a very large sick leave allowance that they can accrue over time, and if they don't use it, they can accumulate it and save it and continue to carry it over until they've reached a maximum cap of 720 hours. So you're allowing your, your Plan One and Plan Two folks a pretty sizable period of time to be paid while they're out. And when they do use their accumulated sick leave and they're out, they get paid at 100%. So instead of getting a 60% benefit, they're getting the entire benefit, albeit for 720 hours, not until they're social security retired. So the sick leave policy that you have allows your Plan Ones and Plan Twos and your hybrid employees at this point in time to accumulate at the same rate. So if you think about your hybrid disabilities, once they're out of work for five days, they have a disability policy that kicks in. However, they're accumulating sick leave at the same rate as someone who does not have that benefit. Does that make sense? Anybody have questions? Can we see where this kind of is going? Okay. So basically, what, you know, what we're looking at is your hybrid employees don't really need that much, you know, basically, it's not really unlimited, but this big bucket of sick leave, they don't need that. And what happens is, is as they accrue that time and they build it up, you're, you've kind of got this unfunded dollar liability sitting on the books that they're probably never gonna have instance to be able to use. Because if they are sick for more than five days, they'll, and they're legitimately sick, they'll get disability. They will need sick leave anyway because they do have children that get sick and spouses that get sick, and, you know, they may have the flu for four or five days, that wouldn't be considered a disability. So they still need some sick time, but this idea of having this accrual that carries on forever is, is one of the recommendations that we're gonna make. So the recommendation that we were making was kind of around capping the sick leave for the hybrids and letting it accumulate to a max. And I pulled together some data based on your, just the findings in your group to say if we, if we max this, we are looking at, I can kind of go forward, 240 hours is what our recommendation is. Sorry, I'm going back now. And then you can see that there's 21 total hybrids with any kind of leave balance at all, because again, these are only employees hired since January 1st, 2014. There's only one that accumulated greater than 100 hours, and one employee, one additional employee that had greater than 200. So you actually have one at 200, one at 100, 11 that have greater than 20 but less than 50, and five that have less than five hours. So you can see that most of your people don't have a balance that is in excess of what we're trying to, nobody has a balance that's in excess of where we're trying to place that cap. And the reason to bring this to you is because I, you know, I want you to be confident that nobody will be hurt by putting this cap and nobody will lose anything. It's just really to mitigate any future responsibility that you may have with the hybrids gaining, you know, the big bucket of hours. So what our recommendation is, is to continue the hybrids to accrue the same as Plan One and Two, meaning they'll earn it in the same way. You know, first, I think it's like one day per month they earn, and they'll earn it in the same way. The difference will just be that the Plan One and Twos have a cap of 720, and the hybrids would have a cap of 240. 240 is 30 days, so they can be out 30 days for things other than sick leave. The one thing that, that kind of does come into play here is paternity leave. So when we think about the laws and how they're moving, it looks like, you know, the state and many others are looking at giving fathers or adopted parents, adoptive parents, the ability to have an equivocal sick leave allowance as someone who actually physically had the baby. So if you think about when you actually give birth, that's, that's a disabling event for six weeks, whereas if you are the father, you don't actually get disability because you didn't give birth. But many of the states are allowing, many of, the state is allowing their employees, and we're seeing a shift toward them, allowing them out for that duration of time. So this recommendation of 240 hours doesn't quite get you there, but it's, it's, but it does get you through 30 days. So that would be the only thing that I would consider. The reason that we're requesting you to do that is because we want to make sure that your, your Plan One and Plan Two continue to have the leave that they need in order to be out and be sick and have coverage. We also want the hybrids to be able to accrue enough time so that they can be out if they should have family medical leave needs, and we're trying to mitigate these large balances. Does anybody have any questions?
But the county doesn't actually pay for sick leave, so if an employee, they don't get to cash out their sick leave at the end.
If they leave, they don't.
That's correct.
Right. So if, if I have 500 hours and I, today's my last day, county doesn't owe me for those 500 hours of sick time.
That is correct. That is correct. One of the things that we see, what we see to start happening with these large sick balances amongst folks that are hybrids, and again, the hybrid policy is only in place about five years, but what we are seeing is those who have managed to get balances are, because they're not, they're not, they're not keeping that time and saving it and coveting like a one, a Plan One or Two. If you went to a Plan One or Two and said, "What are you saving all that time for?", they're like, "Well, as I get older, when I need it, I want to know it's there if I have cancer or whatever." If you have the hybrids, they don't ever really have that fear of needing it, so they're spending it much faster. So they're accruing it at the same level, but spending it down much faster, so that the cases of absenteeism across the hybrids, as they build those balances, will, could continue to go up, and that's what the concern might be.
There's another unforeseen issue with this that we've discussed among the county administrators in our region, not the name of the county and not the name of the employee, but when you're a small rural county and you have one person doing a mission-critical job, you fill in the blank on what that would be, and they go up for a heart attack or something like that, and they happen to have 720 hours of sick leave built up, you're paying them at full rate out of your budget, and you almost have to come in for a supplemental appropriation to hire someone else to do the work for the same period of time. That was kind of an.
Well, yeah, that is correct. And the other thing that I think bubbles up, and is kind of one of my last bullet points, is it kind of builds equity, and I know this may not be the driving force, but it kind of builds equity between your Plan One and Plan Two. Imagine if you're a person who's worked here 20 years, who had three children, had to save all of your time in order to actually get time to have those children to be paid off, and you may not have been able to accrue enough. But then you have the hybrids who come in, and they don't have to save their sick time, they get the same exact amount, and they get this benefit of having it all paid for. So there's this feeling that says, well, if they're not allowed to, you know, it kind of builds a little bit of equity without really making massive changes to anyone's particular policy.
Wouldn't the real equity be if the hybrid employees got a full pension instead of a small portion of a pension, and the rest of their money's in the stock market, which is super stable? That would be the real equity.
Yes, and this, this really only addresses the disability portion of the hybrid program. There is a whole component on the hybrid program around that.
That's something, there's a larger inequity here.
I would, I would tend to agree with you there. I just wanted to highlight that.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions for me?
Anyone have any more questions?
Currently, this, this would affect 23 employees that we currently have.
23 employees?
Does that include the school system?
No. They have, they have their own.
Nancy, just one question, may help the board to understand. How many counties around us have adopted similar type of recommendations?
They're slowly, well, let me back up and say, I handle the disability program for the whole VA Corp. program around the state, so I have a good visibility into what, more or less, what everybody else is doing. I think your bigger counties went right away because, because they, you know, they needed to mitigate this. The other thing is, is you're somewhat in a safe situation for the very reason Ms. Lewis said, is that you don't really have this building up of cash, right, that people can cash out. But if I was a county that had a policy that says, "We're gonna pay $50 a day for every day you have banked up," I'd quickly cap that because they'll never use it, right? So those folks gravitated to this very quickly. Now, it's kind of some of the counties who are kind of just trying to clean up some policy. I'm not trying to evade your question, but there's probably four or five in the immediate vicinity that have made policy changes. But these questions, I do these kind of things, all, every day, somebody's calling me saying, "How should we change our policy?" So there's this, there's this known need to make some modifications in the policy, it's just whether or not they're pulling triggers and getting it done.
And I'd just like to recognize, our HR department actually joined us. She just walked through the door, Ms. Diane Baird came in towards the middle of the, the presentation. It's something that Diane and Betty and I have been talking about on and off for a while, and it's something that Diane has asked that we look into.
Do we need a motion on this? You do?
The board may want to appoint a board member or staff just to kind of review it, if you care to.
You don't want them to?
I'm prepared to offer a motion.
Well, Betty, what's your recommendation?
I think that if they're prepared to do a motion, I think they need to go ahead and do that.
Well, there you go.
All right, well, at this time, do we have a motion to, for the recommendation of the hybrid employee sick leave policy for Middlesex County?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
No second.
We have a motion, it's been properly second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, discussion?
Yes, this is kind of a weird discussion. I really don't understand this well enough to say it sounds like a great idea or not. And I, I apologize, it's not because you didn't do a good job.
It's complicated.
It's just that I, I do not really understand. So I'm not gonna say no, and I'm, but I also don't wish to say yes either, so.
So you're gonna abstain?
You got it.
Okay.
Nancy, if Mr. Mansfield was able, could you and Diane sit down and walk him through it a little bit more detail?
Absolutely. Feel free.
Very good.
You guys can call me, we can do a working session.
Okay. All right, when we had a motion, been properly second. All in favor of that motion, show by the sign saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
I think all.
We have one abstain.
Yeah. I don't know if it's.
Next is line item six, regular agenda item. We have the Middlesex Water Authority promissory note. Matt Walker?
Yes, sir. I would address this. I'm having a little bit of technical difficulties. It happens sometimes when we switch between PDFs. I'll try to get that up and running for you. Give me one moment. But in, in brief, this discussion actually emanated from the December or November board meeting of the Water Authority. The board may recall that we recently approved a promissory note, kind of memorializing the agreement for the million-dollar loan in order for the Water Authority to design and, and begin the processes on the water system. There was also a $450,000 loan that was documented in the minutes, and again, in the budget adoption from the year prior. To be consistent and to have good memorialization of those agreements, the Water Authority wanted to do, well, the Water Authority and staff wanted to duplicate the similar type of agreement, memorializing the million-dollar loan. So what this does is basically just add that much more memorialization, if you will, of a previous adopted loan, so the county can be paid back for the money they've loaned the Water Authority, which is my recommendation to the county administrator that we make sure we do. If there's any questions on that.
It's not new. It just lays out all the terms that the county would repay, that the Water Authority would repay the county.
That's correct. This is a loan that was approved almost a year ago, and it's in the minutes, and it's in the budget, of course. But now we have a promissory note for your approval, and as you see, if I can get the document to pull up, Mr. Chambers with the Water Authority's already signed on behalf of the Water Authority.
73.
Okay, 73, I got it. Great change, listen. If there are any questions?
Yeah, I had one, and I'm kind of regretting that I didn't ask it before. The terms for fourth paragraph undersigned hereby covenants and agrees to the following and further acknowledges that any of the following shall constitute a default under this note. Failure to repay the loan in full by December 31st, 2024, understood, no problem. Failure to install and operate a water system for the citizens of Middlesex County by 2024. What's the logic for using 2024 there when the intent is to be done much sooner?
Oh, well, that is indeed the intent in the plan. I think it's similar language to what we accepted with the million-dollar promissory note. It's a, we will, knock on wood, definitely have a water system deployed by that date in time, but it's an outlier. There may be some time needed after the deployment where we close on the USDA loan, and that's when the county would be repaid in full. So it's, it's basically a safe date, not exceed date.
Yep. I have no further questions.
Does anyone else have any questions on this? All right, at this time, I guess we need a motion on this promissory note.
I so moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'm assuming the motion is if we execute the promissory note?
Yeah, the motion to execute the promissory note.
I second.
We have a motion, doing properly a second. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I think in response to several of the public comments today, it would be worthwhile to remind everyone, including me, of exactly what the county's obligation is for the water system, because it looks like there's a multimillion-dollar water system that the county is going to provide, and it's easy to lose track of the financing that is coming through and promised by USDA to repay the county, all except, I think, some of the Cook's Corner and the fire hydrants.
That's correct.
If you, if you wouldn't mind just recapping that, because I think it would help everybody keep current.
And you've given me a good excuse to segue to Google Earth. That could illustrate it.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Betty was waiting on it. Real quickly, the county has two loans to the Water Authority. We have a million-dollar loan and a $450,000 loan, and those are memorialized in the promissory notes. We also have a $700,000 grant that was given for the provision of fire protection throughout eastern Middlesex County. That 700,000 was largely based on the cost of hydrants, which we discussed to some extent last month in our budget work sessions. The other expenses, Lud, that you mentioned, are expenses that are happening on county property to deploy what amounts to service lateral connections to the main water system. One of the responsibilities the Water Authority has is One of the responsibilities the Water Authority has is we provide a water system and new connections on private property, or largely borne by that property owner. So you mentioned Cook's Corner. We just deployed a catalyst water system to serve the Cook's Corner office complex on the north side of the road, along the highway, and into the county-owned properties and county complexes. That was the Cook's Corner portion of the project. There's also money in the budget for service lateral connections at the middle school and elementary school to connect to the well complex at the middle school and the well complex to the elementary school. That, along with the connection fees, are the extent of the county's commitment to the Water Authority. Unless I'm missing something, Betty's giving me a face. Okay, maybe just because we have a cold. In any event, largely, the Water Authority has been kind of going it alone. I mean, the chairman of the Water Authority's in the audience, I think you will recall. He said on a number of occasions, we're expected to deploy multimillion dollar water system with very little capital support. And we've been blessed in one respect, as you mentioned earlier, that the USDA has qualified the Water Authority, its water system, for a very low interest rate loan at 2% for 40 years, which is coupled with a $3 million grant, in order to deploy what amounts to 42 miles of water system in a community that here and forth does not have a water system available.
And that, if I can just add my understanding, make sure that I'm accurate, that the loan from USDA will be serviced from the fee of users that was originally economically justified at 400 and some users, and we now have 600 signed up. Is that right?
Yes, sir, over 600, and I can go tangentially, real quick, on a little explanation to remind the public and the board. When the Water Authority was created, we were created with a charter, and I say "we" because I'm currently serving as the executive director of that body too, under a charter that did not allow the Water Authority to have mandatory connections. We recruited connections, and one of the delays, if you will, in the initial deployment of the system was we had to go into the community and say, we're here, if you want water, sign up, we'll have an incentivized connection subscriber system, where if you sign up, we'll try to serve you if we get enough interest in your area. There were areas in Delta Ville, for instance, and Delta, and other areas of the county where the initial response wasn't as good, and in those areas, the Water Authority's largely not serving. There were areas specifically in Delta Ville and other areas throughout the county, I should say, that had a greater response rate, and those areas are areas the county, the Water Authority's serving. So, long story short, we actually had to recruit enough subscribers to be sustainable in order to even move forward with the USDA. So it's not a situation where we got the loans and the grants from USDA and then went out searching for subscribers. It was more of a situation where we had to get the subscribers in order to move forward with the engineering on the system. The Water Authority was very cautious and very diligent in making certain that we had a sustainable water system with the number of subscribers then present. Since that day, we've actually added close to 100 new subscribers, I believe, more than 100. So the water system's very sustainable from the user fees to repay the USDA and pay a little overage for operation and maintenance. And again, when we closed the USDA loans, the county would be reimbursed in full for their bridge loans in a sense that they've given the authority.
Thank you.
I'm glad you clarified that for the citizens out here, so they understand, you know, what's all going on. And a lot of times, I like to say too, if you see something in the Sentinel, call some of these board members, and if we don't have the answer, we'll get it for you, because a lot of times Sentinel's good, but sometimes it kind of, you get your information kind of mixed up a little bit. I'm not saying the Sentinel.
No, Fesler.
I'm not trying to finger you, Larry, but I'm just saying, you know, sometimes, you know, the message gets kind of wrong, a little wrong, and a lot of times, you can get more clear information from the board, county administrator, or any of us, and like I say, we don't have that information, but we'll find it for you if we can't get it right away.
Happy to discuss it, I've done so several times.
Yeah.
In the defense of Larry a little bit.
If I may.
Larry covers the budget, and Tom covers, Tom Chalimi covers the Water Authority. So there's two different people covering two different things.
Yes.
But it's also worth mentioning that the county funding that we came up with for the fire hydrants, anyone whose house is saved by one of those fire hydrants may not be a supporter today, but they probably will be when we have that, and everyone who's currently paying their home insurance rates that they're paying right now that they're going to see go down because we have adequate fire coverage, they might be bigger supporters than they are currently right now. So there was county money that goes towards fire protection.
Yeah.
But there is a return on that investment to the community.
Well, in many water companies, if you will, and I feel the energy coming from the chairman of the Water Authority, so he's gonna get on me tonight if I don't mention this, the Water Authority was created to provide drinking water to citizens of Middlesex, not necessarily a fire protection component. And if you look at the cost and line size, pump size, storage volume, the list goes on and on, in order to upsize the lines to where you have a fire protection system, it's very substantial, very substantial cost increases. And I would add, logistically, if you look at when we have fires in our communities, oftentimes, if there's a fire hydrant within, Wayne, you're a volunteer fireman, I'm a recovering volunteer fireman myself, the preference within our fire departments is to find a hydrant and to fill a tanker and bring that tanker to the scene. There's a great reluctance to use any other source of water, so the nearest hydrant is probably where they're going to try to tap for fire suppression. The board will recall, our Maritime Museum burned down in Delta Ville several years ago. I know, I think they drained several swimming pools, and not saying the same wouldn't happen under a water system, but there's a, fire ground suppression techniques are a lot better off having a fire suppression system. I won't elaborate, but I think I had to mention that because four-inch lines are all you need to provide drinking water in most cases.
Okay, man.
Eight and 12-inch lines are what you need for fire protection.
All right.
I'm gonna shut up now.
That's enough. Okay. All right, well, we had the motion for the promissory note for the Water Authority. We had a motion, it's been properly second, and then we already had the discussion. All in favor of that motion, show by the sign saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed? If not, motion so carried. Next line, item B, would be the free shade deposit refund. Betty Muncy?
In your packet, there's a request to refund Mr. Cook's payment that was made for renting the free shade. It's no longer going to be used. I would request the board authorize that return.
Do we have a motion to refund the deposit for free shade rental?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we're probably second, any more discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, show by the sign saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Motion so carried.
I'll abstain.
All right, I didn't understand. One abstain. All right, next would be the board and committee appointment. Betty Muncy, again. Number one would be with the airport?
Yes.
Oh, you have it there, go ahead.
There is a vacancy on the airport committee. Oscar Barber turned in his resignation from that committee last week. He has received two applications for filling the remainder of that term, one from Chip Holt and the other from Robert Roberts. And then the other appointment that's requested is an additional alternate to the VIPS of Board.
All right. So first, do we have a motion to appoint someone to the airport committee?
There's only one spot available with Oscar's resignation?
Yes. There are, I believe, two terms that expire in August, that's when their terms are up, but I don't know if either of those gentlemen wished to be here.
Did at one time, they had more than five on the board?
One time, they had, I believe, 11. I think it's seven, seven now.
Seven.
Seven now.
Seven now?
It was 11, and they had difficulty getting quorums to attend those meetings, so they cut their numbers back to seven.
Seven.
And made it, and also, when it was 11, it was by district, and they had a couple at-large people, but now it's all at-large and seven.
And a seven. What are the two people, Robert?
Robert Roberts and Chip Holt has asked to be on that also.
And Chip's been on that committee before, is that correct?
Yeah, he's familiar with what's going on at the airport.
Yes.
Very familiar.
Chip was on there for four years representing the board.
Well, what's the will of the board?
Also, the same thing, there's nobody on the board now that's in the area of the airport, that's actually living within the area.
I can't think of his name. There is someone that lives on Cox Landing Road, that's the closest.
So you have nobody at all on the board really representing the area itself, or close to the airport?
No, not moving there.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we put Robert Roberts on the board.
Is his application on the report? Because I'm seeing Chip's but not Robert's.
No. Mr. Roberts, Betty gave you supplemental.
Got it.
It was just.
Yeah, I wonder.
Mr. Roberts submitted his yesterday.
Oh, he submitted yesterday, uh-huh. And I see Chip down here. All right, well, we have. Well, at this time, we have a motion on the floor.
And he is from that area.
Well, at this time, we do have a motion on the floor at this time for Robert Roberts. Do I have a second?
No, second.
We have a motion, it was probably second. Any more discussion?
I, yeah, I would just think that it's worth discussing, Chip's having been on that committee for four years. In my mind, gives him knowledge and experience that is valuable to that organization. I do think that it is useful and productive to have the committee get input and even participation from people who live in the area. I think if, from my own perspective, if there's only one place open, and I've got someone who's got four years' experience on the board supervisors and with that committee, and is a former pilot, I feel like his knowledge is very valuable to that committee.
Well, you know, from the, Robert Roberts, it seems like he's a local one close to the airport, and he'll be good to be on the committee too, that's what I feel. I'm not saying that Chip won't be good to be on the committee, but somebody from the community should be on it. And like you said earlier, we had as many as 11 on the committee one time before, and for some reason, we cut it back to five. You know, just maybe we consider six with a tiebreaker, because something come out, and as all you know right now, is there some things going on at the airport that we may be not satisfied with? And without a local person on it, the community itself wouldn't have anybody to speak at all about how they felt, or how they feel. Now, I'm not saying Chip wouldn't be good for us, his knowledge or whatever, he was a pilot, know this guy and stuff, but he's not in the community. And I think in some way or another, maybe we can work it out to have someone local on that committee, because basically, we're talking five, six, we talking about voting if something come up, and where they're gonna carry to the next thing. Then all we got to do is say if it's three to three, then you gotta have a tiebreaker. And maybe you have a tiebreaker, maybe you could come back to the board of supervisors, or whatever, and that way you would eliminate, the community have to say something about we don't have no representation, and we putting everybody else on it that are, I guess, fly planes and all this stuff. But common sense gonna get you a long ways if you realize that some things are happening that we don't put our backs to, that we don't realize. And just because somebody want to be on something, you know, you can't, I'm not worried about that neither, but we need to support the community around the airport with someone in that area, and then if we got six, I lack six, because that's mean that it can come back if you have a tiebreaker, you got a tiebreaker, because that mean you gotta go four to two or three to three, come back to the board of supervisors, and then you make the decision if something major come up at the airport. And evidently, something major's gonna come up one way or the other.
I'm a little confused. I think we're at seven, right?
We're currently, since we need the seven.
We're gonna be at seven once we appoint one more person.
My thought is five.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add, it's my understanding too, there's been some conversations from the airport committee, we have a representative with us tonight, Mr. Jamie Barnhart, and I think the committee had discussed maybe increasing their membership to nine? Was that correct? Or did they have a number in mind, Betty?
I don't know the number.
Well, I think there was some discussion about.
There was some discussion about that.
What did it?
They would have to change their bylaws.
Right, they needed to amend their bylaws. You know, speaking from the administration's point of view, we really welcome citizen input. And I know we've been years, sometimes begging people and trying to find people to serve, so it's kind of refreshing to see renewed interest in multiple folks wanting to serve. And I would say staff's had some discussions with a couple of the joint and property owners, and would see value in having the joint and property owners on the committee, if not now, then if the committee was expanded. I mean, more input, better.
However, at this time, there's.
We have one.
Yes, sir.
Right, right. All right, well, like I said, it was a, it's been motion and probably second.
Yeah, I guess the only other comment I have read, you is I have a lot of respect, this is in your district, and therefore I do have a lot of respect for your perspective on your district. So thank you for your comments.
All right, well, we had discussion on it, and I guess I'll put my two cents in. You know, I understand where you're coming from, but I also like experience too, on that board, but you know, I respect your district on that.
At the same time, you know, I also say that maybe we could change something to make sure we have community representation on it.
Right.
Because, see, what I'm understanding from something that most of y'all maybe don't understand, it's a reason, and you're gonna hear me say this again, that when you form things in a certain way, it's a reason for it to be happening. They still need community representation. You know, whether we decide to do it tonight or tomorrow, we need a community representation, period. I don't care how much experience they got. If you really go back, you know, how much experience do they really have? Really go look at it, how much experience they really have? I would say Miss Betty got more experience on shit, I mean, I don't know, let's go put it down.
Mr. Wes, Betty's got more experience than anybody here.
I said, you got more experience than, you know, so.
Right, right.
I look at this, and you know, but that's me, I go on second, whatever I gotta do, next thing, I'm gonna think about it.
Okay, well, that's fine, like I say, and I guess the airport committee, if they want to enlarge in their committee, you know, just bring it before the board again, and you can expand. But right now, it's gonna be seven right at this time, and we have a motion on the floor right now, and it's been probably second for Robert Roberts at this time. So, all in favor for Robert Roberts? Show by sign, show by sign saying aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
We have one abstain. Motion so carried. All right. Next, Matt, we want to point to the VPP SA alternate, Matt Walker.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not looking for more work, but I'll explain this a little bit. Our executive director of VIPS, Mr. Steve Geisler, has decided that he is finally gonna retire. He's been talking about it for several years, and I was asked by colleagues to potentially serve on a recruitment panel, not a recruitment panel, a selection panel for our next executive director, being that we go into closed sessions and have other personnel or sensitive personnel issues to discuss in the recruitment and selection of our new executive director. It would be a little easier and more, I think, appropriate if I was appointed back to the board. As the board realizes I was chairman of the organization for a while, and they have formed a selection committee to select the new executive director, and they've asked, well, he to serve on it as well.
All right. Do we have a motion to appoint Matt?
I moved that we appoint Matt Walker, alternate to the board of VIPS.
Yeah, a motion, probably second.
I second.
I think Reggie seconded it, didn't he? Yeah, it's been motion been probably second by Reggie. Motion probably second. Motion probably second. Any more discussion? All in favor, that motion show by the sign, saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion so carried. Line item D, Budget Supplement Request, 2020-31, Betty Mutzy.
This is just a request to appropriate monies received. It's an in-and-out, what we call an in-and-out, where it's just putting monies back in for, that were received for expenses given.
Okay, well, do we have a motion for the Budget Supplement Request Form, FY 2020-31?
I move that we approve Budget Supplement Request, FY 2020-31.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have two seconds.
That's a good motion.
Yeah, we have a motion probably second. Any more discussion, all in favor, that motion show by the sign, saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion so carried. And E, Betty, sales and surplus of vehicles.
I didn't realize that.
Yep, you're back there again.
Surprised.
The Board had declared several vehicles and equipment as surplus, and we put those out for bids, and these are the prices that were received. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve different submit bids on various equipment and vehicles, so you have those there. So, if you want to go line by line, I guess, item by item, and you have the option to award to the highest bidder, I guess? Or I guess you could make that motion.
I would make that.
To award the, that would be the easiest way to do it, is just to award to the highest bidder, and we have the envelopes of who those people are that are designated A through L.
And I'm assuming line items seven, ten, and eleven didn't get any bids?
That's correct.
Okay.
So they.
Mr. Chairman.
They might go to, might just sell those over at Middlesex Metal.
Yeah. They normally take it. I'd like to make the motion that we sell the, how many did you say, eleven vehicles that you've got quotes on, twelve?
Looks like eleven.
Well, it's three of them didn't get anything, but you can.
Yeah, I made the motion that we sell the vehicles that we did get quotes on to the highest bidder for that individual vehicle.
We have a motion on the floor to sell to the highest bidder?
Second.
Motion probably second, any more discussion? All in favor of that motion, show by the sign, saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion so carried. Number seven, County Administrator Update, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, you'll find my written report in the packet between pages eighty and eighty-one, meaning it's not in the packet, and I apologize for that. We were ill last week, a lot of us. In fact, at one point in time, we had two people working on the second floor because everyone else had the flu. But I do have one item that I'd like to speak to very briefly, and I've already introduced it in our budget work session today, and that is the county administrators and I have discussed our need again to go out for reassessment services. Back in 2015, 2014, Middlesex County partnered with King and Queen, Essex and Matthews to put out a regional request for proposals to handle our reassessment of real estate, real property in all four counties. Currently, Essex County's underway with their reassessment. They wanted to go ahead and get it going because they wanted a little tighter window in their reassessment, and I think they had other justifications. The county's administrator in King and Queen and, to a lesser extent, Matthews is considering putting out this RFP. And I just wanted to let the board know, last time when we put out the RFP, we had the Commissioner of Revenue, county administrators, and I think there was an odd board member here or there that served on the selection committee. That's our intention on how to handle the selection of our firm again. We'd like to get this RFP modified to fit our current body of the willing, if you will, King and Queen Matthews, if they wish to join in. Modified and out on the streets this spring in hopes to have a firm selected and work beginning this summer on our reassessments. Just wanted to brief the board on this matter. We have several new members that weren't on the board back in 2015, but as we stated this morning in the work session, by doing it regionally, we bring more parcels to the table, we can get more interest from bidders, and generally, a little bit better deal doing it together than opposed to doing it individually. So, staff's going to be working with the other county administrators in the area to see who wants to glom on and who wants to put the reassessment out. We hope to have something out this month. Of course, the board would have to authorize selection of any individual. We'd come back for that recommendation. It's my recommendation to the board that when we do go out, if we have a selection committee similar to the last time, that one of the board members, if you wish to join the selection panel, you appoint a board member to that panel. And of course, my recommendation is to appoint Ethel May Burke and myself on that selection committee panel. And that was my report.
That's it for you? All right, how about County Attorney Update?
No, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any here at this time.
All right. Do we have any unfinished business? None? All right, and on the new business, I would like to discuss a resolution that I would like to have to send to Congress Whitman about the post office that we have up in Jamaica area. I'd like to thank Alice Luck for looking after everything. I mean, it's a mess up there. She's sent a lot of information to Congressman Whitman's office, to Chris, but I got it together, and once she sent me all that information and also talked to the postmaster. What it is, the lease is going to be up for a trailer that the, I would say, the government owns, otherwise. And the Postal Service owns the trailer, but they're just letting it run down, they're not doing anything to it. The heat is out, and they've been trying to close this post office for a long time, and they're not doing anything. But there are some options on the plate that we're looking into, because there's another place in that area that's rentable, that's in good shape. But prior to that, we need Congress to get involved with this situation. Because in the past, there were like three or four post offices in that area, they closed them all. And so, we have a lot of elderly people, and I checked the boxes, there are like sixty-nine boxes that people come there, you know, every day to get their mail. And it would be very, it would be hindrance for the citizens up in the county for them to close it. So we need something really done in a quick time because the rental of that property, just the land, they're not going to lease it. I think it runs out in March. So, right now, what I would like for us to do is work up a resolution so we can save that post office. We'll get the wording together with Betty and then send it to Congressman Whitman's office. So Chris can look at everything and make sure that, you know, something can be done to keep from them closing that office.
Wayne, are you asking Whitman to find funds to make it, you know, in a different location and a better rented situation? Or is it just a resolution, say, please address this, here's the problem?
Right, please address it and here's the problem, and maybe they can figure out something. I've talked to the postmaster, and she seems to think that, you know, there is a building in that area that is rentable, that someone is willing to rent. So that's some of the other options that could be on the plate, but I don't know for sure, but this is what I was told. And we would just like to make sure that, you know, Congressman Whitman and them would actually know exactly what we need, and it's a very, very serious problem to the upper end of county for our citizens.
So in support of keeping a post office in the area?
Support, yeah, right.
By whatever means.
Right, right, supporting.
So, do we need a motion now, or can we just release staff to work on a resolution?
I think it would be good to just have a motion and staff will work on the wording, just as long as we know we can get that.
So I move that we ask staff to produce a resolution in support of keeping that post office in the area? Does that work?
Yeah, that'd be fine. We have that motion, we have a second, we have a motion, we're probably second. Any more discussion?
Do you need it to come back to you to?
Well, I think once you, you can write it up, because the time is up to essence right now. I don't want to prolong it too long because we have till March, because I think the landlords, they're not going to renew the rent.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, we've done something very, we haven't in Middlesex, but I should say, in 2011, there was an effort on the part of the post office to become more solvent or sustainable, and they went through many rural communities and tried to close smaller demand post offices. We actually have a resolution that I was involved in preparing when I was with Bath County that we could probably get from Bath County that would solve the purpose very well, it's very generic.
Is it legal for us to have, see the resolution individually between meetings?
I think, I'm going to go out on a limb, we've got our counsel here, but I would say as long as y'all are in consensus and there's a vote on the general language of support, I think we could get you a copy of it, and individually, we could hear back from you saying, yeah, that's fine.
Well, I did talk to Chris, the representative, and once you write it out, he can just look at it and then just give us some more ideas on it. But I think whatever works for the camera.
For my perspective, I want to keep the urgency alive, especially if the lease is up in March.
Right, it is up in March.
But at the same time, if I'm trusting someone to go write a resolution and then I see it in the papers later, and I'm like, gosh, I wish I'd have taken a look at that, I'd still like the right of last refusal.
Right, well, it's good for all the board to see, if you can get something done with it soon as you can, and we can all take a look at.
Yeah, the resolution in Bath was over the Cova post office up there, and I think it would be more than sufficient.
Maybe at next Tuesday's meeting, the work session?
Yeah, we may be getting on Friday.
We meet Friday.
Friday, Friday would be fine. Friday would be fine. Yeah, Friday would be fine.
I could have a, I could have a redraft of what we did in Bath.
Because if you think about it, once you close that post office.
You're not going to.
You're not getting those boxes back. It's old. It's a done deal, you know, because, you know, if you close it, then try to put something somewhere else, you're not going to get them back.
So for the public and for the media, for clarification, on Friday, your work session, which starts at eight-thirty, Betty?
What time it start?
It starts at nine-thirty.
Nine-thirty.
So, do you want to, at nine-thirty, take board action on a proposed resolution?
Is that your preference on how we do this?
At some time, I just think you should announce that you intend to take action on it either in the morning or the afternoon.
I think you'll have the votes.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just, I think it's more proper if we do it that way.
Right, right.
And we still keep the urgency.
Yeah, let's do that, got to keep the urgency.
Morning or afternoon, whatever the board's preference is.
Okay.
Can we do that at the outset of the meeting? Thank you.
All right.
So do we need to vote on that now? Because we had a motion in the second.
As long as it's a consensus that we're going to develop it for you and you'll look at it.
Well, the motion is second, right? We had the motion is second, but we motion is second and while we discuss it, let's vote on the motion. All in favor of that motion, show by the sign, saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion so carried.
And who made that, sir?
Lud.
He did now.
Lud looked at me there. Okay. Next, we have a new business, Sewer Collection Option for Alternative Committee.
Thank you, Wayne. We all know that we have an enormous, enormously important project facing Middlesex County. There are two aspects to a wastewater and sewer collection, sewer system. There is what I think of as the backbone that would run the length of the county through the populous areas that would then carry the wastewater for treatment. And HRSD has stepped up and agreed to construct that at their expense, to be paid for by all of their subscribers, not just the ones in Middlesex County, but all of their, I don't know how many, if they have a million subscribers, but throughout the HRSD system, they would be amortizing the cost of that major expansion backbone across all of their users. However, the collection system that needs to be put into place in all of the populous areas would be the responsibility of Middlesex County or a private enterprise or the citizens themselves, somebody other than HRSD. So, we have a wastewater treatment solution that will reach the populous areas, but we don't yet have a viable economic solution to how we collect the waste and get it to that system, in my mind. The estimates that we've received from the engineering studies are, in my mind, not feasible for the tax base that we have. So we've got to find a better way. We need a better solution to how we're going to collect and transmit the wastewater into that treatment system. There are a lot of alternatives. In general, there are trade-offs between having the end user do nothing and rely on some other entity to put it in, maintain it, make sure it works, even if the electricity's off. That's the fifty-five million dollar solution that HRSD is willing to do. But it's just too, in my mind, I think it's too pricey for this user base and this tax base. So, I would like for us to be able to examine alternatives, and they may differ by population center. You may have HRSD do Cook's Corner in Urbana, but you may have a different system for Deltaville and Saluda. I feel like we really need to have an in-depth study to be done by a subcommittee that would include citizen volunteers as well as some board members who've expressed an interest in order to study and come up with a cost-effective solution to be proposed for how we move forward. The importance of this project has been underscored by the shutdown of two oyster beds nearby recently due to norovirus. We are facing, whether you agree with climate change or not, the rise of sea levels appears to be a reality, which when we have ground, when we have sea level septic systems in low-lying areas of the county, it's an issue and it's going to be a worse issue. And so, I feel like we need to address it, but I feel like we need to form a committee in order to do that, to come up with how we cost-effectively move forward. At the same time, we don't want to take HRSD off of their path to, because they're in a budget cycle right now too, and they need to allocate this capital for this project as they're looking at their long-range plan. So I don't want to take them off the path at all, but I would like for us to study how we can cost-effectively do a collection system.
Could I just add a couple things, very briefly?
Absolutely.
Lud? You know, you talked about maybe considering different types of systems, whether it's vacuum step, et cetera. There's also that fifty-five million dollar number that's scaring everyone, I think almost everyone, it's envisioning deploying every single place we could possibly deploy. So there's also the optionality of saying, well, maybe that never gets deployed because there's not enough people showing interest in that area. And then there's also a timing. But to your point, we want to preserve all of that spread-out investment that would be coming from the larger HRSD forced main investment, but then we need to do the study that you're proposing and form the committee you're proposing to right-size the solution for this specific county geographically, demographically, financially, and it's going to be something much less than fifty-five million if we do that correctly. So I'd happily join you on that committee if you're proposing to chair said committee. I'd also happily stay off of it if that was your preference.
Yeah, that'd be great, love to have you on. So, that's my motion, is to form this committee that would come back to the board with one or more alternative proposals that will be more cost-effective for the county as soon as possible, and that we, I don't have a list of committee members at this point. John's expressed an interest. I don't know, Pete, if you expressed an interest when we talked about it. We need to have citizens involved. We're fortunate in this county to have people who've retired from public service that know something about these matters, and I would love to have them as a part of this committee. So I don't have a definitive list of members of the committee at this time. committee at this time.
And I think, by the way, that we should get Greg Chambers on, too.
Let him finish the last.
He doesn't really have enough to do right now. You mean, you mean Pride of Middlesex Greg Chambers?
So whether, do you, do you, do we need a motion on that? Are y'all just going to have a consensus and y'all get a committee together? How you want to do this?
I think it's up to the board how you want to handle it. Several, several citizens come immediately to mind, but you may want to allow some advertisement, hey, we're looking for some volunteers. A couple names were mentioned tonight that would be profoundly important. Having, just went through this process with the water system, any number of water authority members could serve on it very well. Not least Greg and any other member that may have time.
We need a motion on that?
So I guess there could be a motion to form the committee, but I concur with the county administrator that if you're going to, by making it a formal subcommittee, you know, the Freedom of Information Act applies and we have to have your, our notices and, and if you're going to appoint citizens, I think it would be appropriate to advertise and then say, next month, you'll have your committee list of appointees.
Okay. All right.
So I think if you, there is a desire, I think a motion to make the committee would be appropriate so staff can then advertise and have a list of applicants for you.
All right. So do we have a motion to, you already made the motion.
That's my motion.
Motion to form a committee. I second. Motion probably second. Any more discussion? All in favor of that motion, so by a sign saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion so carried. And then issuance of board press release.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just real quick, would the board like to establish a timeframe for citizens that are interested to get their request in? Because we would like to have a deadline on that so the board could get all of the interested citizens, maybe at the time you get your board back?
Yeah.
So would the deadline be the Friday before the board meeting, Betty? To make sure we get all the citizen interest formed?
No.
It's before the Friday.
Before the Friday.
That was a softball. When would you like to have the deadline, Betty?
At least on Monday before.
At least the Monday before.
Sorry, just wanted to point that out there because that's, that's a good thing to get in the paper now. So we meet again on March 3rd? Would you want to have them in the 24th of February?
Have that. Yeah, that's fine.
That's enough time, wouldn't you think?
Should be.
Betty gave us sort of, I think that's.
No.
Monday or Tuesday, 24th, 25th?
Yep.
Do you need resumes from board members also?
We'll take any and all information a citizen would want to give us, but I was thinking something along the citizen interest form for any other committee.
I think you want board members.
Yeah, and by then, I guess y'all would want to decide who on the board would want to serve. If three or more board members serve on it, it would be a meeting of the board. So it meets, it rises to another level of notice to the paper and whatnot.
I would happily step aside.
I'll let y'all decide how y'all want to handle it.
How about if we have two board members with an alternate?
Yeah.
So that we can just be more responsive.
Yep.
And you have a mechanical engineer that I know is very interested in the subject.
More experienced than you.
So, so by the 24th?
Yep.
Okay, very good. We'll make sure that gets in the paper, too, and solicit some interest.
Next is a press release, issuance of a press release.
I, I'm in big favor of having the board communicate often and more with the citizens. And I discussed with Heather how we can do that. And one idea that she had was the board could issue press releases about information. So for example, after this meeting, we, we have official minutes that don't get approved until our next meeting. And so we, we don't have an official publication about what it is that we've done. But if we wanted to issue a press release as a board to talk about the two important things that got done in this meeting, for example, not trying to have it be formal minutes, but just to be informative, to try and keep the citizens better informed, maybe give a different perspective than Larry or Tom are able to, to get from their perspective. I think it would be useful for the board to have a direct, a communication ability. It could be posted on the website as a press release. But we need to have a resolution that we're going to do that, and then we need to have a process that I think would be, I don't know if there's such thing as a unanimous consent with this type of organization. In a business environment, you would circulate the draft and have everybody say, I approve, I approve, I approve. And then once approved by everybody, you would say, here's the release. But can we do that in this?
You could not, I'm going to, I'll answer the reply to all portion. I know it's on your mind. If we, so we had a staff member prepare of the two main items and do a little press, do a little synopsis. Couple thoughts immediately come to mind. You may want to blast that out to the entire board with one email. And of course, as the board knows, anytime you hit reply to all, then the board is having a discussion on the matter that could involve three or more board members. And that's where lightning strikes and you've had an illegal meeting that's not advertised. So what we would do on something like that is whoever the employee is, send the email to two board members max and get feedback from two or one, and then coalesce that and then report back to the board, here's what we, what we drafted, here's the comments we got back, we made these changes, and repeat the process. What I was thinking of, that it may be an employee that listens to the tape or watches the video, and then to actually communicate with a board member directly to say, would you like to expand on something that you started in a meeting and have a quote inside the press release? We've done that type of thing before. But it's whatever the board wants. There are some logistical things we'd have to look at. Anything you want to add to that, Heather?
No, I mean, I agree with county administrator. I mean, you know, typically, I understand in the past, there's been specific items the board has said, okay, Mr. Walker, do a press release on this. You know, that, you can always do that as well. But if we're talking about just a general synopsis of each board meeting, where, I mean, we can absolutely do that and try and get a consensus from the board.
With the consensus, that they have to, everybody have to agree, suppose might say, no, I don't want it. So where do you fall in at that? Is it majority rules or what?
Well, this is what staff's turning to the board and saying, you need to tell us, how do you want that to work? I mean.
Well, and I can, we, we, I can give an example recently where this came into play. When the board received the preliminary engineering report findings from HRSD, the $54 million number that I agree with John scares the living daylights out of everybody who sees it. It would have been nice to be able to explain that more because, as John said, it does encompass the entire service areas. And that was primarily because HRSD does not want to have to pay for another study. They want to study an area once, come up with a preliminary engineering plan, when it was never the intention of the board or staff, or really anyone involved in the discussions, to deploy sewer throughout the entirety of those service areas, only in catalyst small phases, primarily in the commercial areas of the villages depicted. Long story short, it would have been nice to have something we could have blasted out. But in order for staff to develop that, we need to make sure that we're saying the message you want said.
I'm very supportive of this. I just think we need to cut staff loose on figuring out the logistics from the point after this meeting to the point two or three days afterwards. How do we navigate it and snake it through all of the board members? And then what do we do if we don't have a consensus? Because I could see where we're having to shrink back what we're trying to say down to like a seven-word thing that we all agree on if it's a particularly contentious issue. But I, I think that's where we would have to have discipline as well, in the sense that, you know, this is what we voted on and this is what happened.
Well, I, I agree with that. So in each one of our meetings, we start off with approving the minutes from the last meeting, which have been, you know, very carefully recorded. What we're asking, as this conversation evolves, would be for the staff to maybe distill a couple points, important points in the board meeting that represent what we agreed, what we did. We should unanimously agree, in my mind, that, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with publishing that. It's, I don't see why it would be controversial because it would basically be just representing the conversations that took place in the meeting or the decisions that were made during the meeting. Similar to the minutes, but it's just not an official approved record of the conversation.
I was going to say, pretty much, almost just a list of the motions that were made or actions that were taken. And then if anyone wants any more information, they can always look at the tapes.
I, I think, Lud, let me just, I guess, make sure that I'm understanding you. I think what, what Lud's after is something a little bit more creative that gets a message out, not just informs of the key actions that were taken. And that may take a little bit of doing. I, I think it would be needed. I, I think it would be something the county would benefit from, obviously. One potential situation I could see is what Heather would think is the most important two items in the meeting, maybe completely different from what I think are the most too important to what Susan, or Betty, or any other employee. It really depends on the lens you're looking at something through. I think in this meeting, well, I'm going to say it, I may regret it. I think everybody could point to a couple of very important things that happened in this meeting. But again, it really is in the eye of the beholder and, and who perceives it. So the logistics, I think, can be worked out. One of the things that, at least for the initial time, we'd want to do is have whoever's responsible show their work, get it out to all of the board members, and get feedback, and make sure this is what we're looking for.
Yeah, but isn't it, if you send that out to get feedback, that then becomes a meeting.
Well, individually.
How are you sending it?
Yeah, but you're, you're kind of playing games. By sending out five different letters, all exactly the same, in all reality, it's doing the same as sending to all, because you are sending it to all.
The point of send, send to all, what it does is if one of us responds to send to all, now we have a discussion among the entire board.
Yeah, it's the discussion, not the.
The fact that you're separating them out, you're still sending to all. You're right. But they're not all in the same room.
I, I, my, my feeling is that, bless their heart, I think South Side Sentinel does a good job in telling, telling people pretty much what happened at the meeting. And then people that have a problem, I know a lot of my constituents come and say, hey, Pete, what do you, what do you think they mean by this, this part? In other words, I, I really don't think that we, I, I don't feel that we've got a great need to do what I think ends up kind of a controversial.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I kind of disagree. I, I think it would be very helpful for staff to be able to convey the message of the board and not work through filters. No offense to the South Side Sentinel, I think they do a great job. And the article on the sewer was very accurate. No, no complaints there at all. But there was the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey would say, that had, had Lud not written a letter to the editor, probably wouldn't have got out there. And so I think there is some benefit. No one is looking for more work on the staff level.
Well, we don't, nobody says we have to do this every month. It's just, I think that last month, Lud and I both were concerned, like, gosh, I, I know how that's going to hit the ink on that paper.
Yeah.
And when what we're saying is, with this sewer project, it's like we walked into a restaurant, looked at the menu and said, we're going to order everything on the menu.
Right.
That's $55 million.
That's a very good analogy.
We're not going to order everything on the menu.
No.
So I mean, in key instances, I, I think Lud's got a very good point. It would be very beneficial for the county to have something out there that we could point to when a citizen comes up to one of you all or one of us in the food line and say, hey, what are y'all doing? Oh, my God, this is, whoa, whoa, whoa. You want to read this and that gets into a little bit more. Again, it will be a lot of work. And if it's done right, it's going to be readable. If, if I write it, it's going to be too voluminous because I write sometimes like I speak. So we find the right employee that has the talent to do something like this. I think it'd be something that could make the board's jobs a little easier and affect better communication with the constituents.
So do we have consensus that we're advising staff to pursue an understanding of how we might be able to do press releases within days of, of board meeting?
Rich?
I'm, I'm good with it.
Good with, okay.
I have one employee in mind that, that I think has the talent.
We got consensus, everybody's.
Yep, there we go.
All right. One clarification question I got to ask, because I, I think, I've got an employee in mind that would be capable of doing this. Would it be inspected the employee attend the meetings? Since we video and we record and they have access to all of y'all for any kind of clarification if they want to pick up the phone? Or is it someone who doesn't, isn't, wasn't necessarily in the meeting to do the work?
I, I have an opinion there, if you allow it.
Yeah, what's your?
I think initially, we would want that person to come to the meeting so that they could get a sense, okay, now I'm going to go try to watch one on the video. Am I missing anything?
Right.
Or can I really synopsize what happened in the room from the video?
Right.
I think you can, but I think you need to sit in on a couple of them to get sort of used to the space and how the conversations flow.
Yep.
Well, you know, I think about this, you know, these press releases might not be all the time, just on certain things. So I think with Lud and the rest of us here, and you're good at it, if he sees something, you know.
Well, the employee I have in mind will probably be leaning on Lud a little bit for some editing and editorial advice, if you will.
Either way, it doesn't matter to me. Okay?
So you're saying about, what you talked about, he could send each one of us what he's talking about.
He or she could send out a draft to each board member individually, each board member give their feedback. Well, that's not quite what we, you know, and then we work through it.
And then working through Lud with that person you're talking about.
I, I think Lud has a very good marketing background and would be a wealth of information for the employee.
Okay.
Everybody else could get the information on this.
All right, that's good. Okay, everybody's good.
Thank you, consensus.
Okay. Next, mail is presented by the board. I guess I'll start to my left. Start with Lud. Your committee report.
This is, I'm so new at this. Is this what I've been doing for the last, since our last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. So I had a meeting with finance committee with the schools. We had a maintenance facility joint meeting with the schools to talk about whether there was joint demand for maintenance facility among other county entities like the Sheriff's Department. We had, attended a planning commission meeting. I have joined the VACO, Virginia County's, or, yeah, Virginia County's Economic Development and Planning Steering Committee, which meets twice a year. And I attended, in Richmond, I went to the General Assembly or to the House Committee meeting for the full committee regarding House Bill 1448, transferring management of Men Hayden Fishery from the General Assembly to the VMRC. It's a matter that I brought up here in many past meetings. That, that bill passed the full committee and a similar bill passed the Senate committee, and it could come to the floor this week. And so we have, for the first time, a very good chance of transferring Men Hayden management to the VMRC.
Thank you.
Pete?
I would like to consider sending a resolution to the governor or a letter to the governor or, and Senate and the legislature, the entire legislature, concerning the use of water by the, by the two paper mills. Because that has been studied by a committee, I guess, six months ago. And they put a res, they put out a memo from a special committee of state legislature saying that if you have a body of water, and of course, they didn't say it this way, I think they said it a little bit better. But if you've got a body of water that is being renewed from rain, et cetera, and it is being used for drinking water, the drinking water gets total precedence over use for agricultural purposes and certainly for, over industrial use of drinking water. Now... Now, everyone's sick and tired of hearing Pete Mansfield say Potomac Acuper. But the Potomac Acuper is the most important body of water that we have for drinking water purposes in this area, probably in the state of Virginia, I'm sure in the state of Virginia. About forty percent of that water is being used for industrial purposes. It doesn't even come close, we do not even come close to have a refreshing stream equal to what we're drawing, which I'm gonna say for lack of a better number, is 100 million gallons per day. Best estimates are the refreshing is somewhere between 1 and 2 million gallons per day. So, why in the world is our state government agreeing to let these paper mills continue? They have, there's a law that says you cannot use drinking water for industrial or agricultural purposes unless the refreshing flow to that body of water is 100%. We need to write a letter asking somebody, how come there is no legisla, or how come there is no enforcement of that law? Why are you looking at me that way?
Are you finished? Are you finished? I'm not working yet. Are you finished, Pete?
Sure.
Okay. How does the board wanna proceed with that? I'm just, I'm up for questions.
From the conversations I've had before, I think the process would be, you draft a letter, and you have Heather review it, and she'll probably come back with some questions.
Have you done this before?
I don't draft it.
But I mean, I think letters been sent before, haven't Pete? Have letters been sent up to, have, did we write a letter one time before?
Oh, I've written quite a few letters, but not with, but I have never mentioned the fact that it's a state law that is being violated, and it's being, a state law that is being violated, that is gonna hurt our kids, or our children's children. It is something that I cannot understand the state legislature receiving a report like this, and there being no action taken whatsoever. And I'd like to know why.
Well, I guess we can talk to Keith Hodges or something, and work up something? I don't know.
I think what I'm hearing is, Pete, you need to draft the letter, and then have the county attorney take a look at it, and then if it passes her muster, then you bring it to all of us and see if we wanna sign on with you. And I'm happy to look at it before you send it to Heather, so that you and I can sort of bounce some ideas, and see what's gonna likely get all of us to be interested in putting our names to it, if that would help.
Okay. Do you, by any chance, remember reading the article that the legisla, a committee of the legislature came up with?
Yeah, and there's substantial legislation in Richmond right now about this issue, and about fracking, and how it impacts our aquifers. You know, I don't know how much our county can do with resolutions. I think we're more effective when you do, as Lud and I have done in the last couple of weeks, and you go down to Richmond, and you find out which bill is the one that you would be supportive of, and you go speak to the subcommittees and testify, and say, you know, this paper mill's taking 16 million gallons a day, it's not supposed to be, per the regulations, Department of Drinking Water isn't doing anything about it, you know, I mean, when you say it to them, and when they're in their committee making decisions as to whether it gets up to the next level, sometimes they listen, sometimes they don't, but I think the resolutions get lost in the rubbish bin.
Okay. I will be more than happy. John?
Yeah, I had a lot of budget and finance meetings, it seems, Middle Peninsula Regional Security Center meeting, Middlesex Foundation meeting. Probably most interestingly, I got calls from constituents around the Wake boat landing, and we are putting together a full court press on seeing if we can find a solution to let DGIF let us go fix the problem, since they don't have funding, and they're telling us they're waiting to do an engineered solution before they do any maintenance, and actually remove the sand. So, I'm working with some local contractors, very benevolent folks that are, just see this as a problem for our local watermen, and also, you know, if summer gets here and people come in to back a boat down a ramp, and that ramp isn't there anymore, they're not coming back to that ramp. And DGIF is not as invested in this as we are. So, we're actively working on that. I just got an email from Dave Kretz, that permit is still open for maintenance. So, if I've got the contractor, and I've got DGIF's blessing, and it doesn't cost anybody anything, all the contractors want is they can use the sand on other projects. So, when we pull it out of there, they might want the sand. So, this has all happened in the last three days, since I met with somebody at a Superbowl party, but there's finally some motion, and I'm excited, because this is one of my major things in my district, to have this thing shut down and nobody doing anything, it kind of falls to me, because nobody else is doing anything, I'm not sure if DGIF would ever do it. The other thing I've been spending a fair amount of work on is this electric bus grant. I think we've selected where we would put a charger, and we're gonna have Dominion out here on the 10th of February to look at that, and also to present to the school board, so that they're sure that the $342,000 grant that Dominion's offering is a good idea. Dominion's gonna present that on Dominion's behalf. So, those are some of the things I've been working on.
Rich?
Well, basically, I've been, you know, I've been to the Middle Peninsula Planning Committee, and I learned some interesting things my first time. The basic thing I wanna learn about is a little bit more about solar power. And they got quite a few bills that's coming up about solar pounds within this month, to get us some hold on it. And I'd like to see a better hold on that. I know I've been talking, different ones have been telling me, Will, Will Wills been talking, in fact, he called me today and asked me about, what did I think of his, what his proposal probably gonna be laid on tonight? And I simply told him that, yes, yeah, I said, I'm citizen of first, I'm concerned about landowners, I'm concerned about secondary highways, I'm concerned about the thousand feet off, and also talked to Dave, and I said, we shouldn't have got this far, because we passed some resolutions we shouldn't even pass. I mean, some of them we passed on solar pounds, it's sad to even say it, we shouldn't even do it. But we got here. And talking to different representatives from different areas, they're saying what they're recommending right now to do is hold, and see what they come out of Richmond, don't do anything right now. Some of them went as far as saying they had designated places, that they was gonna put them in their county, they had an area designated, and that's it. And in talking to Dave, the day, I said, we need something that we don't need to discuss. So, in other words, that we have it here, if you meet these qualifications and zoning, you do it. Now, you take for instance, that Locust Hill, and secondary road. If you look at one that came up earlier this month, that I guess a lot of people didn't like, the way I felt about it. But you know, we got secondary roads that are developing too, that we got business on secondary roads, you go to Assembly of Locust Hill, make a right turn, you got developments going right down 619. And at the same time, do we want this kind of system right in the middle of what we trying to do? And I think if we kinda like put people out of the picture, and start dealing with things that we can deal with, so we can be consistent, so all of us can do the same thing. But going to that particular meeting, I found it very fruitful. And the second thing, I went to airport, and I call BB, Betty's baby, you know, and I went down there to talk to different ones, we talked about the realignment of the airport. We sat down, and it seemed like a lot of trickery. I was told that it won't go cost the county any money to realign the airport. And I made it very clear, I said, I just encourage you boys, I said, when somebody tell me it don't cost nothing, then don't try to charge me any of that. Then I started looking at the numbers, I said, man, you know, do we know numbers, you know, so that's out there. A realignment to airport, I believe straightening up, I think it'll be safer. But sometime, if you put your hand in the fire, and you gotta watch how you put your hand in the fire. And I like to talk simple. You gotta watch how you put it in, and some things, I'm just still learning. But I do understand these things, when you start plucking these different numbers around here, and I like to see always sources, instead of, you know, kinda going around the circle. And I see that sometime, we can go around the circle. But once again, I'm still learning. I've talked about the airport, the planning commission, I learned on that, and I think tomorrow, I gotta go in the social service, nine o'clock tomorrow morning, check with Betty on it. So, I'm learning all the time. I think something John said, John said, take about three months before you get your feet on the ground. So, but I'm trying, I'm trying.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just chime in?
Yeah.
That, to me, was the most important thing that just happened in this meeting, because we redefined Hummelfield as Betty's baby. Yes, we did, that was important.
Baby. All right. Okay, I did attend the Rappahanna Community College 50th anniversary, that was in Abana, that's very well attended, good program. Sports complex meeting, there will be the 25th anniversary, if you understand, that's been there for 25 years. And then, they're gonna have something this year for that, and also, they'll still have their annual golf tournament in June, and they're gonna irrigate the two baseball fields, and lighting of the soccer fields down on that complex. Also, attended the Middle Peninsula Planning Commission, that they have a House Bill 1262, which is a transit occupancy tax, I hope that goes through, I know Middlesex and Matthews are also gonna be involved in that. But also, House Bill 1675, dealing with the solar farms. This bill, which is gonna be very important for localities, this bill grants locality various powers to execute sitting agreements of containing certain requirements to, for their agreement provisions. In other words, it's a host bill. So, in other words, when these solar farms come in here, the county can generate, and it used to be called a proffer, but it's almost similar to proffer, hey, we want you to, if you're gonna put this solar farm here generating this, we want you to help out the schools, the fire department, something like that. So, this bill will generate revenue for the county, and that's what I'm looking, that's what we're looking at. But see, until these bills go through, you know, it's nothing that we can do with it right now, but that's why it's very good to, right now, to kinda hold your horses up a little bit, and wait till the general assembly finish up in March, and then we can judge some of the things that are going on in the county, because right now, you're not getting much revenue from these solar farms, and yet, you got DEQs, gonna end up stop checking these things out, and we getting from county for soil erosion coming in there checking it out, going back and forth when we have storms, and different things like that. So, there's a lot of things going on with that, and that's it for my committee report. I did tend to, got so many there gonna be meetings we going on, the Oyster Festival Foundation, things are going good with that, we did have a good year, because it didn't have any rain, and a lot of nonprofits made some money. And that is it for me. And also, last thing I would like to announce, that I would like to be good for the county to get a table for the Mardi Gras this year. So, I would just like to be good if we have a table representing the Mardi Gras.
And I believe there are eight seats.
It's eight seats, okay.
I can't make it, but I'm supportive.
Okay, all right.
And Wayne, the 1262 about the transient tax?
Uh huh.
The House Subcommittee recommended reporting eight to two yesterday, so it's going up a level, so it's...
That's great, that's good enough, okay, we got a good chance on that. All right. Okay, at this time, we need to go into closed session.
And you will not be taking any action afterwards?
2.2 dash 3711, A1, A7?
Well...
Can I say so?
Yes, sir. I give you permission to say it.
Two weeks ago, Mr. Kimbrook, you stood before this board, and you said, nobody reads the South Side Sentinel. Well, as a board member, I want you to know that you're not gonna pressure me, as a reporter, into covering this board the way you, as a body, wanted to be covered. I'm gonna keep giving fair coverage to this board the way I have for 38 years. My coverage is not for you. It's for the people of Middlesex County, and we do the damn best we can. And I just want you to know that.
May I respond?
I think, right now, everything is said and done, and we can take care of that at a different time, but appreciate your input, relax. All right, at this time, you said we don't have any, don't we have something in the exact session?
We do, but there will be no action taken.
No action taken, okay, all right, go with it.
So, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2 dash 3711, A7 and A8. This is for consultation with legal counsel and staff pertaining to the pending claim and litigation styled James M. Johnson versus Keith M. Ruxo, Middlesex County, the board supervisors, Mark U. Holt III, Wayne H. Jesse Senior, Robert L. LaBeuf, Peter W. Mansfield, and John D. Miller Jr., where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation and the litigating posture of the public body.
We have that motion?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
A motion probably second, all in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to certify the following statement, to the best of the members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted in the motion by which the closed session was called, was considered or discussed in the closed session.
Do I have that motion?
Still move.
Do I have a second? Second, motion probably second, all in favor of that motion, so by side say aye.
Aye.
Right?
And move for recess.
We have a motion, we have a second? Second, motion probably second, all in favor of that motion, so by side say aye.
Aye.
Motion's so carried?
Thank you.
All right, we'd like to convene and open this public hand. The public hand, A 2020 dash 24, Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. This is our 2024 Capital Improvement Plan, the, it's, of course, we know this is strictly advisory. This is basically how they had it, this is how it was advertised. We understand this is not a request for, an actual request for funding allocations, or it's not, you know, it's not a capital, a county capital budget. It's intended as a planning tool to assist the board supervisors in the development of the county budget. Of course, we know it's a county improvement plan, strictly advisory. The plan is intended for capital facilities planning, does not request for funding allocations or county capital budget. It's a tool to assist the board of supervisors. Of course, once the CIPA is adopted, individual project priorities may change throughout the course of the year. It's quite possible that certain projects may not be funded during the year indicated on CIP, or even at all. Section 15 dot 2, 2239 of the Code of Virginia assigns this responsibility to Planning Commission, to draft it. Code states that the local planning commission may, and that the direction of the governing body shall prepare and revise an annual, annually a capital improvement program based on the comprehensive plan of the county or municipality for a period not to exceed the ensuing five years. Of course, this is updated on a annual basis. The Planning Commission Capital Improvement Committee met December 17th to prioritize departmental requests as they received. The plan is a result of work, and comes to the commission with the CIP committee's recommended prioritization. This is an update to previously adopted improvement plans. The recommendation from the planning commission, it was unanimous, nine to zero, with one absent, one vacant, to recommend approval of the FY 2020, FY 2024 Capital Improvements Plan. Staff, in addition to that, recommends approval of the same plan. Mr. Chairman, I can pull that plan up, I'll have to go back over here, if anybody wants to see the plan, I can pull that up, and you can go through it, or you can act as, do as directed, so to speak.
Right, well, you can pull the plan up.
You want to see it? Yes, sir.
The rule of the board, you know, to pull it up.
That's fine. And they take a moment to find this, I believe Matt has about 20 things minimized.
Right.
Of course, I can.
Can I scroll with you?
Yeah. I think I can go through this with the, it's off skew just a little bit. So, these are the requests. They were, uh, taken, uh, all the different departments presented these in the form of a, in a standard format. That request is then forwarded to the CIP Committee. The CIP Committee scores them. And basically, they just meet and assemble and, and I, staff, collect these, these scores that they have. I assemble the scores in, in the spreadsheet and that determines the, uh, the order of the, uh, request, uh, based on prioritization. We can see that, uh, at, at the top of the list is still the sewer projects. Excuse me, I'm having a little bit of a hard time reading that, so. Uh, high school renovation scored highly as well. Uh, water service laterals, they, some of these are similar. There was a little bit of shuffling from previous years, but they tend to correlate in priority to the previous years. Some of these are new requests as well, so.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Why in the first one does it show total project cost fourteen million four hundred instead of fifty-five?
That was, uh, presented that way prior to the board. That, this, this was assembled prior to those numbers coming to the board. So, uh, they, I did not have the newest numbers that was presented with last year's information. So the board is aware of the new, uh, the board is aware of the new cost of this project. I think, uh, Mr. Walker's made the board aware of that, that there is, of course, it's been well documented that this cost is, is not accurate at this time. The priority, from, from the standpoint of the committee stays the same, it's just the cost has changed. So, uh, they, they scored it based on this particular number, but the prioritization is the same.
Mr. Chair, could I add a comment there?
Yes, I will.
Yes, sir.
So Pete, the fifty-five million that we got out of this PER is if we were to build everything that could possibly be built sewer-wise in the county. Back when the CIP was formed, before this CIP was formed, we were working with an operating number around fourteen million. So that's what we'd reserve. We haven't made a decision that we're gonna go beyond that fourteen at this point. So this is our best guess. This is, like they always say, this is just a plan, this isn't set in stone. But over the, the course of Ludd's new committee that he's formed, we're going to be looking at ways to value engineer and, and right-size the sewer system to get it within reach. But right now, we were only envisioning fourteen million and that's consistent with our CIP.
Okay, thank, thank you, John. So as we, we go down the list, Eddie, can you?
Can we try a little bit bigger?
Maybe scroll it down a little? Yeah, it's a little bit hard to see, I apologize.
How far down?
Dave? If there's any, if there's anything that strikes the board's, you know, if the board has a question on any of these, we'll just, I, I don't see the necessity in naming off every one of these. Um, I think the board's read it.
Yeah.
That they're aware of the projects. You can see as it goes down the list, the priority, uh, gets less important, I guess, to the committee. And then, you know, the, the score goes down. So they would have, uh, less standing, I guess, as far as a prioritization standpoint.
Dave, can you just explain the terminology a little bit? Because you can have a, an urgent project that's three years out. Is it because that, at three years, it's critical that it be done at that? I'm just trying to understand exactly what urgent means.
That's probably, the departments may put the urgency in there, knowing that it may be put back a little bit and knowing that there's, I, I know that one came up. I talked with Greg Harrow, they were talking about their, uh, need for some of the chillers in the school. And they, it's, it's gonna be urgent the day it dies, so to speak. Uh, it, it, Greg was saying, well, it's good today, but we have to start thinking about this and the replacement of it because it's gonna, it's gonna fail. And then at that point, it needs to, you know, it needs to be funded because it's, it need, you know, it's a necessity. So they put the, you know, he put the urgency on it for that purpose so that when it comes around, it'll be, you know, there's funding there available for it. Understanding that today it may be okay, but tomorrow might not be.
And Ludd, maybe as a different example, if you look at the multimodal transportation project, we know we'll get grant funding and actually be closer to having a project in hand in the 2021 timeframe. So, so some of this has to do with just what we know about the individual project. Some of it has to do, like he said, with the chiller. We know it's gonna die somewhere around three or four years from now, but we need to be prepared to respond immediately, especially if it happens during the school year, et cetera, et cetera.
Does, does that help answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And then we're prioritized too. Sometime you may have to move some things around.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Some things may become a necessary at a sooner point than, than later, so.
Well, and I mean, we know that the school bus replacement is likely gonna be different than this because we're probably gonna be buying two electric buses this year. I know that the broadband deployment, that number's probably not accurate, but there's no sense changing it until we have really good information. And we really only do this once a year.
Right.
And that's where we're at.
It's a, it's a guidance tool, but it's just to help guide the board, give them an idea of what's out there. It's not a, it's not a budget. Any other questions?
Yeah, anybody have any more questions? There's not, okay.
Okay, I'll step aside.
Would the chair entertain a motion?
Yeah, at this time, I would like to entertain, entertain a motion at this time.
Need to have a public hearing.
Oh, okay, let me open it, hold up, let me open the public hand on this first. All right, I would like, at this time, uh, if anyone would like to, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hand at this time. And, uh, ask for the citizens here to let them know that each speaker will give his or her name, uh, for the record. And then let, let us know what, uh, district you're from. And, um, and then, uh, after, after we close it, then we'll discuss it again. Okay, thank you, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. My name's Russ Parkinson. I'm in Harmony Village District, uh, own property on Route Three in Toppin. So I'm here to talk about a couple of items here on this, this, uh, capital budget that you're working on. Let's start with, uh, the sewer and, you know, maybe water a little bit too. Neither, in, in our case, uh, the property we have, uh, neither one's really gonna do us any good because we don't have any plans nor do we, we ever really want to develop the properties. We're more interested in protecting the old house and keeping the forest and the farmland like it is. So with that said, I'm thinking of some of my neighbors that may have an interest in, in, uh, you know, some of these items. Uh, I think the water is a whole lot better value in the long run. And it, uh, the sewer doesn't look very cost-effective to me right at this, this point in time. And it, so the second thing I wanted to talk about is related, uh, to the airport. And that's, um, the role change that's being considered from local service to general aviation. Understand, uh, county only has to pay around five percent of some of the improvement costs now because the state will pay up to ninety-five percent of certain items. If you switch to, uh, general aviation, understand, you have to compete for the money instead of being pretty assured of getting it. And it's, uh, the county pays four times as much or twenty percent instead of five. So I'd ask you to exercise caution with that decision. Uh, it seems the airport benefits few, um, you know, not, uh, not too many of the planes are local even. Yet everybody owning property in the county ends up paying for the airport and the operation. So the airport needs to be paid for solely by the users of the airport. That's including capital costs. And, uh, you know, even more important is probably the annual ongoing expenses, which, uh, in almost all years have been less than income. So in, uh, wrapping it up, uh, one comment, I know there's a hangar that's kind of down far on the list, but my thought with that, before we, we've got right much impervious surface in the area now, right there around Hummel. We add more rooftops, gonna have some stormwater problems, uh, accentuated. And it, uh, it seems like if there's more demand for hangar space than is supply, logical thing to do is raise the rent on the hangars you got. And that would help a little bit with the expense short calls, calls. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that like to address the board about the capital improvement plan?
My name is Ed Robinson, I'm from the Pine Top District. Um, I thought it might be, uh, something worth noting. Uh, and I pass some of these out, uh, to our folks behind me. Uh, these are, are figures that were in the South Side Sentinel, uh, on January the sixteenth, which you're looking at first. Well, um, no need to go down through all of those. But, um, Mr. Walker said there were nineteen items that totaled in thirty-seven million. Uh, fifteen million of that, um, is for water, uh, for Cooksville and Deltaville and Toppin. And I understand we're getting, supposed to be getting a three million dollar grant, I believe, uh, which brings that down to fifteen million. January twenty-third Sentinel shows fifty-five million for the district, different districts, um, that you plan sewer for. And I noticed, um, also that the, the maintenance cost of that was six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, using Matthews' figures for what they have done. But, uh, something that really concerns me most, and I mentioned this through a letter, uh, when y'all were in Deltaville running for the offices, I realized, and when I say you, I realize two of you are new, so don't take it personal. When I say you, I'm talking about the board in particular. But when we were in Deltaville, uh, one of the, the questions that I, I asked to be presented was, what do you intend to do with the twenty-two point five million dollar debt that we have? That is a figure that was given to me by the Treasurer's Office, um, and, uh, at the end of, of, of last year, uh, when we had our audit. It was twenty-two and a half million dollars. And if you take that figure for every family of four in Middlesex County, uh, that is ninety-four seventy-three sixty-eight, around ten thousand dollars a family of four. And I say to you, I don't believe, um, the, the average family in Middlesex County can afford that, let alone to add these different items. Uh, we're going toward a hundred and fifteen million dollars. That's what we're talking about with y'all's figures and with what the county owes today. We're talking about a hundred and fifteen million dollars for this county, in my opinion. Um, we are in dangerous territory. I don't think Middlesex County can afford that kind of debt. I just do not. Um, so many things that, that you need to consider, I believe, before you move forward with these plans, um, are file and rescue. We're, we're real close to, in my opinion, having to go to paid personnel in these positions. If you don't think so, ask them and they'll tell you that we're close. So when you talk about what it's gonna take to hire these people, put, uh, plans in place for them for the future, Middlesex County, uh, is gonna be facing a lot of critical issues. And we need to address those. I believe we need to maintain our existing buildings. I, I believe that. Um, but in some of these figures that you have for the, the sewer, uh, I've seen nothing, uh, that lets us know how much it's gonna cost to fix the damage that these systems are gonna cost the landowner and who's gonna pay it. Uh, we're talking about astronomical figures for signage and, and entrances and things such as that. I'm very concerned about where the figure is really going. I understand, um, often I hear, you know, we're getting two percent money. But two percent money on a hundred and fifteen million dollars is still two point three million. I get it, I understand that. We're talking about bringing business into the community that's gonna, uh, that, why we need water and sewers. Well, I think it'll be a long day getting your tax money back from those people, uh, to even pay the interest on a hundred and fifteen million dollars. That's my opinion. I hear, uh, things like, uh, new terminology, uh, marine service districts. I think you ought to be aware and be careful when you hear and see those things. Personally, when we talk about these additions, I think it's a bad idea to do away with that boat tax in this county. And I know that'll fall on, you know, some ears that don't wanna hear that. I got three boats and I don't mind paying my tax. If you're gonna pay, play, pay. I don't think people that don't have them should have to pay for, um, that extravagance. I just, that's how I feel. We need to shore up our financial position in this county. We cannot, in my opinion, continue to go the way that we're going. And I know that.
Mr. Rob, wrap it up, three minutes, okay?
I will.
Okay.
When we talk about what, what can we do about the problems we have? Um, I think we have to look at not only the money that you guys wanna spend, but we have to look at some of the things I've, I've mentioned that are coming down the road to us. We gotta take care of our buildings and our schools, our property that we already own. I get that, but we need to understand the direction we're going. I think we're going in the wrong direction, uh, with a lot of this. And I appreciate your time, I appreciate what you do. That's Ed Robbins' opinion only. I think we're going in the wrong direction. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone else that like to address the board? If not, oh, anybody? If not, we had to, like, like to close, oh, that Tom, that Tom Schindler. Yeah, I'd like to close the public hand and then open it back up to board members.
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
All right.
I move that we approve the Middlesex County Capital Improvement Plan FY 2020 dash 2024 as written.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Uh, at this time, do we have any discussion?
I'd just like to maybe address some of the comments. Uh, the, the comment about emergency services is, is very salient. In fact, we're already spending five hundred thousand dollars a year to compensate EMTs and fire personnel. And it does look like the trend line is going that way. So I'm in full agreement with Mr. Robbins' comments there. I come to a slightly different conclusion in terms of the value of the investment and how long it's gonna take, uh, to, to reinforce our tax base. I, I, I think it's important to sort of weigh this as, uh, there, there are two sides to that coin. We can continue to do little to nothing or less than what's proposed and we still have options to get off of, of the various exit ramps that are available to us over this year, next year, and, and subsequent years. But the reality is our, our population is declining. Uh, our tax base, uh, as is, is witnessed in the composite index, is yielding less tax revenue. Um, so that means that what taxes are collected are being compiled on fewer and fewer people. Uh, if we don't invest in our community, uh, we are going to see a very, very difficult situation get even more difficult, in my opinion. Uh, part of why I supported, supported a decrease in the boat tax is because I feel that that is one of the few industries that we have here that can benefit from having more businesses and, uh, and more, more employees and more customers that come from all kinds of places outside of our county's borders. We don't have a lot of opportunities like that amongst, uh, our business class. Um, and, and I guess finally, I, I would just say, you know, I, I recognize that this community does not have an infinite, uh, threshold that we can just constantly raise taxes. And that's why I'm spending more and more time going to Richmond and talking to them about construction financing and, and. financing, and more state dollars to be put into things like our schools, because we can't do it by ourselves. We're too small. We don't have the tax base. But if you take the time to go and look at similar rural counties, $21 million is not a ridiculous amount of debt burden to be servicing. We're not off the charts by any stretch of the imagination. And this capital improvement plan is in line with what we have been trying to do. I would say that the one thing that really sticks out on this is, at the top of the list, the wastewater treatment plant. If it comes anywhere close to 55 million, I don't think you're going to find many people voting for it on this board, and we realize that. And we're doing what we can to make sure we're communicating that to the community. But, you know, a lot of thought and a lot of listening goes into creating these capital improvement plans, and I don't think any one of them's going to please anyone, but I do really appreciate the feedback and encourage you to talk with us, not just in public comment, but reach out to us, and let's have a cup of coffee. Let's talk about, you know, what other visions you have for a community with a declining population, with a very, very hurt tax base. I think, I can't speak for everybody, but I'm certainly all ears to hearing other considerations on how we improve our community, but I don't think we can just back away from improvements.
All right. Thanks, John. Anybody else have something to say?
I thank everybody who spoke, and particularly Mr. Robbins, who's, I've spoken with before and have tremendous respect for your perspective. The idea of piling debt onto this county, up to 115 million, is just absolutely a nonstarter with me. And I think it's important to understand, and I'm still getting myself comfortable with this, the CIP helps us prioritize the necessity, be aware of what is coming or may come. Some of it is discretionary. We can choose how we move forward with the sewer collection system, for example. And there are people in the audience who weren't at our earlier meeting where we agreed to form a committee to study more cost-effective ways to try and relieve the need for wastewater disposal in the county. And we'll do that and find a way to do it for less than 55 million. But we are, we also need to be aware that it is a very important issue in a county where we have failing septic systems, and we need to have some sort of wastewater treatment and sewer in order to relieve that problem. There are capital projects here that are rated as urgent that I would not otherwise be aware of, because they haven't failed yet, but they may be coming. And so, as we go through our budgeting process over the next few months, we need to be aware that we need to provide some cushion in the event that something comes up, or be willing to reprioritize. So, I think it's important for me to really internalize myself. This is not our budget that's here. This is a way to prioritize the urgency and the magnitude of these potential projects without having engineering-level estimates for each of them. So, thank you, everybody, for your input and your concern. I think we share your concern very much.
Do we have any other board members? If not, you have the motion on the floor?
Motion has a second.
The public's second. All in favor of that motion, so by the sign saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion so carried. Next on the agenda, rezoning. 2019-04 submitted by KG Investments LLC.
Do you have a presentation?
Yeah. Get rid of that one.
Yep.
That's not in the presentation. That's a different one.
What do you got there?
Getting there, Mike.
There's a lot of minimized projects. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is rezoning case 2019-04. Of course, it's submitted by KG Investments LLC. The request is for the amendment of previously approved proffers to allow all general business uses with amended proffers. The property for which the amendment is being requested has currently zoned general business with proffers and located at 5041 General Porter Highway. It's further identified as tax map parcels 28153, 28153D, and it's in the Saluda District. This is a narrative that basically is the same as what I just listed. It lists the parcels and the acreages, some of the surrounding land uses. You'll note that the comprehensive plan depicts this parcel as going commercial eventually. North is pretty much vacant and forested. On the east, you have vacant property, forested residential property. To the south, residential, and to the west, residential. The property is currently subject to proffers except it as part of a rezoning from low-density rural to general business. This is an overhead showing the property. I think everybody is familiar with this property. It's Old Parven's Market. It's been here for a long time. It's been operated as a business for years. This is the current zoning map. This shows the map as it is today. It shows the parcel, it's somewhat separate, but it is general business, and it was created that way through a rezoning process with submitted proffers. And this shows our commercial infill. You can see that eventually the whole area is slated to go commercial up to that point, so the comp plan supports this particular request. These are a few pictures of the project. Everybody's pretty much familiar with this property. I'll go through them quickly. You can see there's some nice structures on the property. These are the original proffers. They're a little hard to read. Originally, this property was rezoned, and it was rezoned to accommodate a, I think, auto sales and auto repair garage. Now, auto repair garage would probably, would I would be considered one of the more intense uses for general business. Certainly, with this application, they probably could have added in some lesser general business uses. They, auto repair shops tend to have vehicles sitting around a lot. We're familiar with some of them. So, it is a fairly intense use. And with the proffer, with those submitted proffers, they submitted some conditions. It dealt with some landscaping and some screening and some other items in there that, such as not putting cars on a knoll except on sunny days. Some of those things probably should be taken out, and they are with this request. This was the proffer, proffer number three was done with an amendment back in 2015, I believe. And what they did is the applicant, Mr. Carter, was going to use the property as a wood sales and museum, I believe. Now, that's a very restrictive use. It actually made the property more restricted than it was originally. It really tied the property down. The other uses, since that whole section three was replaced with this particular portion, that other portion that had the part that allowed the auto garage and sales was basically taken out and replaced with this. These are the new proffers that are submitted with the project. They are done in proper legal format, something a little bit more accustomed to what we're seeing. Of course, we know the request is for approval of rezoning to modify the current proffers, and the property involved is depicted in the mapping records as listed above. The applicant wishes to amend the proffers to allow all permitted uses that would be associated with the general business zoning district. As mentioned previously, the submitted draft proffers, if approved, would allow all uses listed in general business, Section 11-3 permitted uses. The vegetated buffer areas listed in the original proffers are being retained in the revised proffers for the purposes of maintaining screening from adjoining properties. Modification is allowed through the site plan process. However, the same level of screening would have to be maintained. Certain proffer conditions offered at the time of the previous rezoning are being eliminated with submission of the revised proffers. Staff concurs, with the exception of the vegetated buffers, which are being retained, that the standard site plan review issues, such as landscaping, lighting, and screening, are adequately regulated by the site plan requirements of the respective zoning ordinance sections. Additionally, any new signage shall require proper applications and shall conform to Article 16, which deals with signage. Building size restrictions are being eliminated to allow future owners some flexibility with respect to addition of accessory or primary structures. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of rezoning 2019-04, condition upon the following. Of course, any map reclassification shall be subject to proffer execution and recordation of the submitted proffers. And the planning commission voted unanimously nine to zero, with one absent and one vacant, to recommend approval of rezoning 2019-04. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions of me, I'll be glad to answer them at this time. Yes, sir, Mr. Mansfield?
What is our definition of vegetated buffers?
Well, it's more related to this particular property because there's existing buffers in place. There's an existing wooded area. It's not, when we deal with vegetation, we usually are dealing with our landscape ordinance, which is usually, deals with a certain pattern of landscaping that's proposed, that's usually... Now, what's there now is more intense than our landscaping ordinance would actually require. So, if they were to come back with a proposal, I would try to recreate, and they say they wanted to put in a new, do something where they took out some of that vegetated buffer, we would try to recreate that vegetated buffer, and that's a proffered condition in here that would make them at least mimic the existing vegetated buffer that's there. So, you have to remember, a landscape ordinance only requires, you know, a certain frequency, maybe a deciduous tree or a canopy tree, and then some shrubs, and it's something you would see maybe at the Dollar General or something of that nature. It's not very intense. So, in this case, we do have some of the properties that are adjoining it that we do want to maintain some screening with to give them some privacy and some buffering from the site. So, if they came through the site plan process, we would try to, and they did request to take some of the existing buffer out, we would mimic and try to make them reproduce something that would create the same equal screening. Does that help?
That helps, but I personally think that we need to work on the definition of what a vegetated buffer is. What percent can you see through it? What height does it need to be? We need some kind of specs, in my book.
Right. We could, and we use it, it's used differently on different sites, so it is, you are, to your point, it is somewhat open to interpretation, that's for sure, when you say vegetated buffers.
All right. Well, thank you, Dave. I'm going to open the public hand at this time.
Any other questions?
And we'll get back with you some more questions, all right? At this time, I'd like to open the public here for the rezoning of 2019-04. At this time, can we hear something from the presentation from the applicant?
Well, I'm Eric Johnson. I'm in Saluda District, and I'm in Urbana with Mason Realty, and I'm representing the applicant as the agent. And I would just like to say that we have been working for quite some time to try to sell this property, and with the conditions that are on it, it has made it very difficult to try to find a user who can come in there and do something. And we've had right much activity on this property, but it keeps falling through. Like this guy, Buddy Carter, who came in and actually made it more restrictive and then wasn't able to even buy it, you know? So, I mean, it's just, it's been a real problem, and we are asking you to relax that some because we have a situation now where we have a very good company that would be an asset to our county. It would provide some good employment, provide a better tax base, and they want to do business here, and we're trying to see if there's some way we can help them to get here to do some business and help our county, which we really need. So, that's why we're here before you tonight, and if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer whatever I can.
Do we have any question? Okay, all right, well, thank you, all right.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that'd like to address the board? If not, we'll close the public hand and open up to the board members. Anybody have anything to say, or do I need to make a motion for the rezoning of 2019-04?
I'd just like to say, you know, it's good that someone came along and wanted to do something with Old Parven Supermarket. See, if you was here like I have been all my life, I was so glad that somebody decided to do something with that building. And the company that's coming in and doing this particular thing is a good thing. It's onside the road, it's going to cost jobs, and everything that we want. We're talking about paying taxes and all this kind of stuff. We're getting a tax base, so we're going to get some money from this place that we bring in. I call that smart, just a smart decision. I don't see no way that this boy, myself, should turn that down. We're going to let them go and do what they got to do. Let Mr. Johnson do what he got to do, and whoever's buying it do what he got to do. We got to do something with Parven Supermarket. We've got too many buildings that we are not using, that someone is going to come and do something with it. It's right on the highway. I know it'll look good, and man, I'm all for it. I'm just, straight up and down, I'm all for it.
Did you offer a motion, or...
Are you making that as a motion?
Yeah, I'm making that as a motion, the rezon, 2019-04.
All right. We have a motion, and the public's second. But John, is there any more discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, so by the sign saying aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion so carried. Next on the agenda, we have special exception 2019-05 submitted by Sun Tribe Solar.
Aide? Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If the board remembers, last month, this was scheduled to go to the board, and they had a snowstorm in Charlottesville, so they asked that they table it, so the Sun Tribe people are here tonight to present their case. So, this is special exception 2019-05. Of course, it was submitted by Sun Tribe Solar. The request is for approval of a special exception to allow approximately 43.75 acres small utility-scale solar energy facility to be located on a 60.6-acre parcel in the village community zoning district in accord with Section 8-3.27 of the Middlesex County zoning ordinance. The property for which the special exception is being requested is situated on Woods Brothers Road and is further identified as tax map parcel 38139, and it's in the Pine Top District. This is a brief narrative on the property. Some items of note, of course, it's vacant, so it's not assigned with an address. Current land use is agricultural. I believe there's also surface mining occurring in the rear portion of the property, has for some time. Future land use area, list this as mixed use. Surrounding land use to the north is agricultural, residential. To the east, we have low-density rural and village community, which is vacant. South is vacant, residential, and commercial. In the west, we have some vacant residential properties. This, the area highlighted in the red depicts the property in question here. We can see it's currently zoned village community. Right to, you can see the northeast, it's low-density rural. Of course, on the south, it's general business. It's currently, some of it's developed, some of it's not. Future land use map pretty much is consistent with the existing land use map, very little change in that, in that area. This is just an overhead or a sketch that's been submitted with the special exception request, showing where the facility's going. This has not been reviewed in detail, probably because when it comes forward for site plan review, we'll review such things as the setbacks to property lines and that type of thing. Those would have to adhere to the current ordinance. This particular overhead shows the landscaping. If you see that, there's a, the wide line around the property line depicts the area that'll be used for the vegetation. that'll be used for, for the vegetation and the screening that's required with the application. And this is the submitted landscaping plan, or the, showing the detail how these are planted. This meets our current ordinance. You know, a lot of people think we don't have anything in our ordinance that deals with landscaping, and that's not true. We have a staggered, they're Meyer spruce or some type of cedar that's to be planted and staggered like that so they can grow and fill in. So you can see that, you know, this meets our screening and landscaping requirements for solar facilities, and they've, they've addressed that particular issue. This is a few pictures of the site. You can see it's used for agricultural uses right now. It's fairly flat. Of course, it lends itself to, to a solar facility, but you know, without a lot of grade involved in it. It's pretty much shovel-ready. This, I think a lot of us are familiar with this view. It's looking, we're about standing adjacent to the convenience center. We're looking up Woods Brothers Road. The, the facility would be located behind the existing structure, would also have some screening in front of it to block view from whatever, you know, bleeds through the existing trees would be screened by the more intense screening required for the facility. Of course, we know the request is for the approval of a special exception to allow a small utility scale solar facility to be located on approximately 60 acre parcel. These are the next, the special exception criteria. If the board remembers, a month or so ago, they, item number one was, the ordinance was amended to allow, to, to allow the solar facilities not to have the frontage requirement. We discussed this through that process, that it's counterintuitive to have a frontage requirement and then make them go 1,000 feet back. So that's, we amended the ordinance to exempt that particular requirement, and it does mean it. These are the special exception criteria. A is fairly straightforward, deals with signage. B deals with height. To my knowledge, we haven't had any panels that are higher than 25 feet. I don't see that happening right away.
Takes a hurricane.
Yeah, yeah. I think you'd want to keep them as low as possible. FAA, SEC requirements, that's fairly straightforward. The applicant submitted responses to this claiming, you know, that they can meet these requirements. Structural integrity, that's fairly straightforward. The building permit has to go through a building permit process. There's standards for these through probably industry standards as well, but that would have to be reviewed. Security fencing, not less than six feet in height. They've demonstrated that they meet that requirement. Lighting shall be the minimum necessary. They've indicated that any lighting would be down directed standard, and would have to, of course, deal with, or be compliant with Article 17C, which are site plan lighting This show, this is an item that's, really hasn't come into play yet because it's, we haven't had a facility that went through this particular, that hasn't, we haven't had a facility built that's, we've proved one to this standard, but not one built. But they would have to schedule with emergency services to instruct them how to respond to an emergency in the case it happened. This is, deals with our decommissioning. We have a fairly intensive decommissioning criteria in our ordinance. State code has also tweaked this a little bit. There's also a state code requirement for decommissioning. We're pretty much in line with that. There's one little tweak or two that we may have to do with this, but they have demonstrated and submitted a decommissioning plan. So that's, that's been addressed with this comment as well. Of course, this deals with the decommissioning part two. It's kind of the second portion of that. They also have indicated they comply with this, staff incurs. Of course, building, these are internal issues. The building permits shall be obtained within five years of obtaining special exception. They're aware of that. All, K is all site activity required for the construction operation shall be limited to certain requirements, the pile driving requirement. We never, when they built the Polar Center, I don't, we'd never received any complaints about that. And it went fairly quickly. It's usually over before we even know it, especially in this region with our soft soils and sandy soils. They really, they go through that pretty quick, so I don't see that as an issue. The 150-foot setback shall be maintained from solar equipment to any adjacent residential dwellings that exist at the time of special exception approved by the board. They've indicated that they will comply. They'll have to do that in a more detailed site plan. They'll have to locate adjacent dwellings and show that arc off of those, of those residential dwellings to make sure they comply with that. Also, the M deals with the setback requirements. They'll have to actually show those property lines and the distances to the structures to make sure that that complies with the setbacks for the, for the district. This deals with the landscaping. I've shown that particular detail. They do meet that requirement. So you can see that the frequency, we do have a landscaping component in place, this is landscaping and screening. So they've demonstrated on their plan that they do, do meet that requirement. Access roads will be marked with identifying signage. That's fairly straightforward. That's something they would do on their own. All solar panels will be non-concentrating anti-reflective coatings. I think that's pretty much an industry standard, but they've indicated that they will comply with that, too, that their, their proposed panels will meet that, that requirement. Of course, Q is the last one. This is something the board should be cognizant of. It's, it's a, it allows the board to actually place extra conditions on a site. So if they feel, the board feels compelled that they need to put a special condition on something, they have this ability with this particular component. It's the last component of the requirements. Based on the analysis above, this special exception request is in substantial conformance with the requirements of section eight dash 327 and eight four, section 25 dash B of the Middlesex County zoning ordinance. Per the submitted narrative, the facility meet, will meet the required 1,000-foot setback and use the 60% use coverage limitation specified in the VC district regulations. We, they did submit a narrative that showed that they do comply with the use, the use In conclusion, staff recommends approval of special exception 2019-05. The use, conditions of use shall meet the criteria of section eight, eight dash 327, eight four, and section 20 dash 5B, and article 20, section 25B, and any other site and planning, zoning, or building code requirements. So staff recommends approval. The planning commission voted unanimously six zero with one abstention and four absent to recommend approval of special exception 2019-05. Mr. Chairman, that concludes this presentation. If you all have any questions of me, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
We'll call you back for some questions.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for special exception 2019-05. Because at this time, can we hear from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding Sun Tribe has a presentation.
A presentation? Okay, presentation, okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff, thank you for your time today. I also like to thank you for your flexibility with the, with the weather last month. Thank you for, for allowing us to present here for you today. I'm pleased to present our Wood Brothers Road solar project for your consideration. For those of you who aren't familiar with Sun Tribe, my name is Bobby Jos. I'm a project developer for Sun Tribe. We're established and based in Charlottesville, Virginia. We consider ourselves community-focused partners in all aspects of our development process. We try to incorporate community input into the, into the, into the projects as, as much as possible, and it's, it's an important part of our development process. Not only do we develop projects, we engineer, construct, and operate projects. We're trusted partners for, for many local governments and school systems throughout Virginia, including here in Middlesex County. And we're also active throughout the Commonwealth. We have over 100 projects that completed or under development. Our project team for this project is led by our CEO, Danny Van Cleef, who's here today, myself, lead project developer, Becca Stoner, our development engineer, Betsy Arland, our land manager, and Lisa Mattson, our interconnection manager. To, as an overview for the project, it's a solar energy facility, small utility scale, five megawatts in size. The area within the fenced area of the facility is approximately 43.75 acres. And if you were to just calculate the area taken up by the panels and any other components that are part of the facility, it's about 10.61 acres. We'll be interconnecting to the three-phase power lines, so those are the typical power lines you see running along the roadway onsite, and no additional substation or other infrastructure will need to be constructed outside those required by the utility to connect the, the facility to the, to the grid. And we expect a construction start date of March 2021 and commissioning date, so an online date of July of, of that same year. The project parcel's located off of Wood Brothers Road in Hartfield, Virginia. Parcel 38139 is currently zoned village community. Current land cover is open field, clear timber, and a mining, surface mining operation. The uses are surface mining, silviculture, and a hay field. It's not currently in cultivation. Land use surrounding the parcel, as Mr. Kreutz advised earlier, to the north is the mine and an RPA buffer. To the south is a home and the Hartfield Convenience Center. And then to the east and west are forested and wooded areas. When we're citing projects like this, there, it's really important to us that, that we're not, we're making sure we're, we're quantifying and identifying any potential impacts the project may have. And there are a number of studies that we go through to make sure we're not doing that. Those include cultural historic resource analysis, so looking at any registered or identified cultural historic resources on, on the site within a 1.5 mile radius. The same with wildlife. We look at if there's any environmental items of concern, so if there was any underground storage tanks, any reported spills or, or other, other, you know, hazardous materials on site. Since we are in an area close to the, close to the coast, we look at what are called coastal aviation protection zones to make sure there are no sensitive avian wildlife located in the area. We look at the glint and glare of this facility, see if it's going to impact any neighboring FAA or airports. And then we look at, to see with, with our proposed screening, if there will be any potential real estate impacts to, to neighboring properties. Through our analysis, we found that, you know, we're not impacting any of the, any of these areas. We really feel like this is a great site for solar. A little bit about the project design. We're installing what's called single-axis tracking system. So there are rows of panels aligned north to south, and they track the sun as it goes across the sky from east to west. The facility will use approximately 16,000 panels, all with an anti-reflective coating to make sure that glint and glare doesn't leave the site. This facility will power the equivalent of approximately 1,000 homes. And you can see a diagram here at the bottom of kind of what a, if you were looking straight on a row of panels, what it would look like and, and how they rotate. Because we're focused on, on being, you know, community partners, we recognize that the community here in Halifax is concerned about the visibility of these facilities. Because of that, we've, we've gone a little bit further than what the ordinance requires in terms of buffering and screening and setbacks. So of course, we're 1,000 feet setback from Route 33, General Polar Highway. And the project will incorporate 45-foot setbacks for the parcel boundaries, and it's greater than the 10 that are currently required. We'll also maintain the required 150-foot minimum setback from adjacent structures. And this, this travels onto screening as well. There's a, a bit of existing natural screening we'll utilize. Those include areas to the north where there's that RPA buffer. And then we'll also utilize some existing screening to the, to the, the west and portions of the southern boundary. Where that screening isn't sufficient, we're going to establish a, an vegetated buffer that'll include two rows of offset evergreen trees. This buffer will be a minimum of 20 feet, 25 feet in width. And in exceedance of the ordinance, will also include a row of small shrubs in between the, the evergreen species to further screen the lower part of, of the facility from, from surrounding parcels. And this is what we, you know, in, in congruence with the existing vegetation that surrounds the parcel. This buffer will be maintained throughout the life of the facility to maintain, you know, shielding of the facility from visibility. There are a number of benefits the, the project will provide to the county. Direct revenue from pulling the parcel out of land use and increased taxes on that parcel subsequently. Indirect, as with our other projects in the county, we intend to use local workforce and various scopes during the construction of the project, which will provide both short and long-term sources of employment. And also income that the landowner can then reinvest back in, to the community through his own businesses. The project will have low impact, minimal to no impact to traffic. During construction, during the height of construction, when a few different scopes overlap, we're looking at about 20 trips per day to the site maximum. And then during operation, that'll reduce to two to four trips a month to the site just for basic maintenance, landscape maintenance, and any unscheduled maintenance. We've shown that there's not any substantial real, real estate impact due to the project. Noise will not escape the project boundary. The components of the facility operate at about the, the noise level of a household appliance, and quickly within 50 feet or so of that, that inverter, the noise is reduced to background levels. There'll be no light pollution. We'll conform with all the county lighting regulations, which include the use of shielded fixtures. And then, as I mentioned, the extensive buffering will reduce or eliminate visibility of the project from surrounding parcels. And then finally, once the facility runs its course and, and will properly decommission the facility, which includes the removal of all, all facility components, removal of any concrete pads and foundations, the filling and compacting of trenches, and then the final removal of any remaining debris and equipment. These costs will be secured, you know, in a bond or a certi, or a letter of credit with the county. And the cost of decommissioning will be updated by a licensed engineer every five years. So those costs for salvage value, those costs for decommissioning will continually be updated so that we're, we have the most up-to-date and accurate information on, on what those costs are going to be. So that's all I have. Thank you again very much for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any question?
I have just an interest question. This has nothing to do with yes or no. Please understand that. Could you produce five, five megawatts with a single, a single phase?
No, typically, these projects need to interconnect with, with three-phase power. The, the, I think it's the way that the power's transferred across the grid requires the three-phase connection.
Thank you, sir.
On the bonds on decommission, who will be holding?
The county, the county will. There's a, there's a regulation that requires facilities to post a bond with, with the locality.
And I think in one of them, you were saying that it's gonna be no impact on the real estate that's...
Yes, sir. We, we had a real estate impact study completed. It, it looks at, it takes similar facilities to this in Virginia and, and North Carolina and looks at the impact that, that project has had to neighboring parcels as they've been bought or sold over the years. And it shows, our, our experts showed that there was no anticipated impact to real estate values.
But was that looked at as some type of housing?
Yes, sir.
And what type of housing is that?
Just residential.
I mean, but a low-income housing?
I, I, I'm not sure. I'd have to look back at the report.
The other question I got is that, on this particular project right here, it's a house owner dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
And you say that it need to be 150 feet away from the dwell?
Yes, sir.
When you get some, when you all get somebody to, to draw up an audience, you go 100% by they draw, you don't input on some of the things that you think should be in. And, and the reason I said that is, 150 feet, I, I mean, you know, to me, you know, that's just not enough.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think that, and someone who want to put the pound system in should, and we don't have any information, I don't have any information on it, okay? And we, we, it's more of an impact of you all putting it in saying, "Look." And when we start to write, did it come back to the supervisors? Like Dave, he come back and ask each one of us what he, I mean, some of us what, what we want, they'll rewrite and vote. But my thing is saying, I see the thousand feet.
Mm-hmm.
I know this is new on the market. I know nobody's here that think they know more about it because we can't read tomorrow. So, the thousand feet setback, and, uh, sounds good, but my only question for you right now is that, the input in zoning, when the planning commission is writing, because you know it's nothing out there now, you all don't look at it, you let him just do his job.
We, we've had conversations with that landowner and we also anticipate to develop a, a buffer that will surround that home, so they won't, they won't be looking at the panels.
So you was more so looking at the landowner to see what's what. Also on this particular property, is everybody contacted that know about it? I mean, you know, surrounding landowners or you don't, you don't know that?
Yes, sir. No, we, we spoke to the surrounding landowners.
All of them?
Yes, sir. Or the ones we could get a hold of.
Okay.
Who owns the residence there?
Eugene Jesse. Sorry, Eugene Jesse. He was in Boston. And he has a...
Anybody else have any more question?
I think it was a really good presentation and I would just add that Dave's was as well and I think it shows that we've changed a significant amount of our zoning. He went all the way to Q on that thing and some of this stuff, like on the vegetative barrier, I mean, he's, these guys are exceeding what they're even, what's even in our zoning. So I, I just thought they, they touched on everything.
I, I appreciate that it showed the buffer, I think it said 20 to 30 feet in, in height with, uh, small vegetation in, in between, which is, kind of goes back to the question I asked earlier. What kind of specification does Middlesex County place on it? And I wouldn't mind at all seeing that being the, the specif, what you have suggested being...
The new standard? Is that what you're saying, Dave?
That's, I think that's what I'm saying, yes.
I, I, I agree with you. I mean, I think what we're seeing here is a, a different caliber of attention to detail and, uh, they've obviously been in front of boards like ours, maybe some in Halifax. You know, if, if there's a way to improve, my, my biggest thing that I heard from the big one that is not in my district, but is in your district that went in five years ago, four years ago, was why did they have to put it so close to the road? I don't wanna see these things. And that's when we changed the ordinance to 1,000 feet. Here's a developer that not only recognized that 1,000 feet, they went and found a place that's behind our, where I take my trash in Hartfield. And it's on a dead end and it's already surrounded on three sides. Anyway, very good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, that's it for the, they don't have any more questions?
Thank you very much.
Now, I'm just trying to remember. I know we, didn't we have a public hearing last time or what are we doing here now? I know we had, he had the presentation, so we already had the public hearing, didn't we? My understanding?
Yes, we did at the last.
Date?
Date. We had a public hearing at the last.
Yes.
I thought, oh, we did? Okay.
Yeah. You opened and closed.
Dave, I wanna ask you a question now before we, you know, make a motion.
We had a public hearing last year.
No.
Last month.
Last month.
It was a long...
Because the applicant wasn't here.
Yeah, they weren't here, but the public...
Public held a speech. Right, so he did his speech.
Yeah, I believe we did because the public did show up.
Right, right, right.
We had to because it was a last-minute thing.
I just wanna make clear on that because I know, you know, because of the snow and all that, he couldn't make it.
Yeah, we had to because we knew some people may show up to speak.
Right, right.
We wanted to allow those folks to speak. So I think we did open and close the public.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I was just wondering too. Okay, I looked at it, okay, the property lines. What's in our zoning for the property line? I noticed that on this one, it was, I saw something that said 10 feet and he went 45?
Well, that's one of the things we're working on.
Right, we need to, we need to take a look at that and send it back to the planning commission on that part. I'm just saying.
Yeah, we need to look at our setbacks, not only from the road.
Uh-huh, but, but property lines setback.
Property lines and the joint property.
Because what I'm seeing, what we had in our ordinance, it was 10 feet. That's not appropriate for property line.
Yeah, and see, this is an odd thing because we have Village Community, which doesn't have a lot of setback. It's, it's, it's a little bit odd.
Right, we, we need to take, I'm just letting you know, we need to take a more look at that, you know?
Yeah.
From now on.
It's, it's, it's being worked on.
Okay.
I've already pulled the ordinance out and started putting some numbers under this and we're gonna have a committee meeting tomorrow morning, so we're gonna discuss some of these setbacks and go through some of this.
Wayne, I couldn't agree with you more. I think what you have here, Dave, maybe you disagree with me, but in terms of the ones that you've seen, this is one that has addressed a number of communities and, and so it becomes a good proxy for us to sort of look at almost like a gold standard, like, okay, they've really seen everything. I mean, they went, I mean, that bald eagle, where they're talking about that bald eagle, I know whose yard that is. That's not BS. They did their homework on this.
Right.
And, and you can see it throughout.
Right.
One question I had for you that came up in a previous discussion about the coverage ratio, the 60%, uh, what I saw in here was consistent with my experience in the field, roughly what the, the coverage ratio is. But I remember staff talking about having a difficult time figuring out how to calculate. Did you get any?
Oh, oh, and this was a more or less a zoning determination by me. The 60% coverage is a, is a thing that's indigenous to the, this Village Community for any use.
Mm-hmm.
And, and our zoning order, I like to go through and fix it because it just says the use. Now, what is the use? So I had to come up with, what is the use on a solar facility? So I took the use as being the panels and I took them in the worst-case scenario, being in a horizontal position.
Right.
And I would include the support facilities and structures such as the sheds, the, the support building, control buildings. Those would be impervious surfaces anyway. And the internal roads and surfaces that would, that are not natural grass, such as the aisle ways that are gravelled. And I said, "Well, that's the use." And I gave that to Sun Tribe because my, my original, originally it was submitted as 46 acres out of 60 and that exceeded the 60% because you would write it 36 acres max for 60%. So I went back to Sun Tribe, I said, "Guys, you gotta tune this in. Any of the gaps in the areas between the panels would be credit towards their, their 60%, their, their 40% that they would allow."
Right.
It doesn't have to be a use. So they went back and recalculated that and then came after they tuned it all in and they, they were just taking the panels and the roads and those surfaces and it came back, it was much lower than, than what we anticipated, you know, when we really thought it was. It came in at 10 acres of, of use, which is well under the 36 that they would allow as max for, for, you know, 60%. So that, that was a zoning determination, that was my call. So I had to make a decision as to what, what it, what would constitute the facility and the use. It was, it was a common sense decision, the panels, the road and the, any support structures that they have internally. So, you know, the, the green areas would count for the, for the credit, for the, for that. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. And I, I can just tell, Dave, you have come a long way in three or four years on, from seeing your first one of these to, I mean, you, you spend a lot of time on these. I appreciate that. I would just add one other thing of the developer, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm not asking to make this conditional of, of, if we were to vote for this, but I sure would love an opportunity to have the other supervisors come and see you after commissioning and, and walk these sites because I think a lot of times what we have as people who haven't been out on these facilities is a hard time understanding what they really look like other than from the road. So I, I would love to know if, if that's something that you would entertain, just bringing us out there after, after the thing's built and assuming it gets built, just so that we can kick the tie. We won't kick anything, but, just so that we can better visualize how these things look other than just on paper.
And, and Dave too, with the planning commission, I think we need to look at, like I said before, the property line. Just give me an example, brush fire, uh, forest fire. And if you got the, the proper setbacks, then trucks can get in there, you know, and you don't have to worry about a forest fire falling onto the, the solar farm causing problems. So I'm, I'm thinking we need to take another look, you know, through the planning, planning commission of, of, of better setbacks from property lines that's all the way around the backside. The front side is good, but you know, when you see forest land on the back sides of it, 'cause you know, you know, I'm just thinking that's something that, you know, we didn't have any foresight to looking at and, uh, 'cause that, that 10 feet just kills me when I got, when it, when we got there to some area.
It's stark.
10 feet's not gonna work. I'm gonna tell you that right now.
I agree.
It's not gonna work 'cause I, by being volunteer firefighter, you know, we gotta be able to get back there and get in there and, and, you know, we got something that we gotta look at through the planning commission to bring this back when, when we decide for any other solar farms that come into county.
Right.
We gotta look at that area too.
Right.
You know, also, also, uh...
Yes, sir.
John was talking about the eagle. You know, the eagle mean it's, you know, it's exactly like you want it to be. And I understand that we have came a long way from the other pounds that we put up. The other pounds we put up is just a disgrace to the county because it's things that I feel we need to do. We got to respect people close to the pounds. We shoot at some kind of distance that's reasonable and they are, the information that you sent out to them, I was reading a big white book and they got all kinds of 600 feet, 500 feet away from dwellings, are, are respecting landowners. If we gonna be a eagle, we gotta make sure that everybody look at exactly what we did and when we come from Richmond, we won't be looking, waiting for Richmond to come here. We will be Richmond. See, so therefore, if we try to cut, uh, uh, shortcuts and all this and, I, I, I mean, I talked to, I mean, I, you know, Will's, I mean, we talked and he, he knows exactly that. I told him I was gonna say exactly what I'm saying. And, and you the same way. I feel that, in my personal opinion, that we can do better. We came a long ways, but a long ways we can get all the way to the end. And also as a taxpayer, always circle, we are not getting any type of revenue. We gonna spend a lot of money, it seems like. So the revenue we gonna get is not that great that we gonna get off the pound system. And you know, if you really think about it, you know, uh, when we allow stuff to be in land use and we go back with three or five years, we go back five years, well, you know, I don't like that. And I'm gonna say it right straight up because once you change around, the benefits that you have got for the last 20 years, you don't get anything from it. So you are being beat down over the years, then something like this year come about and when I first heard about it, it was more so like we trying to level the playing field, you know, the farmer against a steady income. And I, I think I heard more of that. Then all of a sudden, it's lack of domino. We started getting one over here because it's not example for it. If we put one in the right place, we got a model. I wouldn't even have this conversation because whoever come to you, we say, "Look, this what it is." Whether it's, whether it's John, you know, none of us, Lud, Manfield, also say, "Look at, this is our model for Middlesex County." And we should be thinking about getting some type of, of revenue from it. That's what I feel about it. That's, and that just me.
If I may, Reggie, I think, I hear your points and I'm probably more frustrated than you with just the extent to which Dominion has rewritten the legislation in Richmond that makes it so that all of the assets that are being deployed, millions of dollars of assets, we're not gonna get any tax revenue off of because they've made the taxation such. But I have a constituent in my district in Hartfield who has an opportunity to do something with his land and we may not see tax revenue because Dominion has made it that way, but my constituent has an opportunity to develop his land in a way that is hurting no one and he's gone to the diligence of finding a contractor that is making sure that it's hurting no one. I don't want to restrict my constituents from what they do with their property, especially if it's meeting A through Q in this ordinance and exceeding in other places these ordinances. And, and the thing that gives me a little bit of solace on the thought of, now we're gonna have these things everywhere, I just, I understand the circuitry. These developers are very interested in this project right now. They are gonna be in another county next week because there's only so many that can go in on a given circuit. So there will be some development and then that'll be the end of it. And then the next thing you're gonna see in about 10 years out here, five years elsewhere, is they're gonna come back and they're gonna start putting storage facilities next to them on the same footprint. You won't even know about it because it'll be so small and it'll fit behind their fence already. But it's, it's gonna eventually start getting us closer and closer to more energy independence and, and microgrids and the like. So there's, there's a lot of unseen benefits, but you know, to the extent that the tax, the tax money's been stripped out of this for us, that's our utility that's done that and even our, even our state senators and delegates are just now learning to stand up to Dominion. It's, it's not something we can, can fix out here.
All right, Dave? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to clarify for the, for the board members and for Mr. Kretz.
Yes.
In the minutes, we did open the public hearing and it says no one addressed the board and you closed it at 7:12. So you don't have to have, you don't, you wouldn't reopen it again.
No, no, let's go.
But I just wanted to clarify that you did have a public hearing at the last meeting.
Okay. I was just wanna make sure we had that.
No, I did too. That's why I was checking the minutes, 'cause I couldn't remember myself.
So, I guess at this time we make a motion?
If, if that's the will of the people.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the project behind the Convenience Center in Hartfield District and follow the recommendations of the planning commission and, uh, planning staff.
All right. At the time, we have a motion.
And I'd like to second that.
A motion and probably a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, say by, sign by, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed? Motion so carried. All right. We have public comment at this time. Anybody would like to address the board? If not, public comment closed. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Did I, did I drop the gun? What's going on?
Just real quick, I wanna poll the board to see who is going to legislative day.
You know I'm going.
Okay.